It's six o'clock and we will call the last meeting of the year, City Council, Kerrville City Council, to order if you will rise and join me in a prayer and a pledge. Lord, we come before you tonight with Thanksgiving in our hearts for many, many things. For the joy of Christmas and all that it brings, for the joy and the privilege of living in a community that offers so much. I thank you, Lord, for all those in our community who give of their time to volunteer to make our community the wonderful place that it is. We thank you for our first responders, for our teachers, for all of those in our military, both at home and abroad, and the families of all of these. We thank you also, Lord, for both the blessings and the challenges you give us individually and as a city. Sometimes we don't like those challenges and we question why, but help us to remember that they help us grow, they give us purpose, and behind it is what's best for our city. We ask for your guidance in doing that. And be with us tonight as we make those decisions, doing what's best for Kerrville. And I also ask that you help us all to remember in all that we do and say to wag more and bark less. Thank you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Stuart, we're ready for announcements.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Welcome to everyone tonight. I've just got two quick announcements because it's December and we have 12 days till Christmas. So we're kind of winding down for the year. And one of those announcements is just reminding everybody about the holiday break here. City of Kerrville Municipal Offices, including the City Secretary's Office and the Library, will be closed next Friday, December 23rd, and the following Monday, December 26th, because Christmas is on a Sunday this year. Just want to keep that in mind. Monday, January 2nd will also be closed. Parks and Recreation Department Office will be open, well, excuse me, will be closed on Christmas Day and New Year's Day. And since we won't see you again till afterwards, we just want to make sure we tell everybody Merry Christmas. And hopefully, we can get a scene like that on Christmas Day instead of February, which is when I would believe that was taken. And that's my announcements, but I think Chief has an announcement, too.
And before, as he's coming up, before he does that, I think we just, congratulations to the Sid Peterson Medical Center, I keep saying Hospital. They had their groundbreaking yesterday for the David and Amanda Williams Surgical Center. And I just, it's going to be a marvelous, marvelous addition to our community.
The destination is on the left.
And we all need to remember, we are celebrating the 10th year of the River Trail on Thursday, I believe. So I think that deserves a round of applause. For those of us who were there that day, it was a great day. All right, take it away, Chiefs.
Mayor, Council, Chief Maloney and I come to you tonight to celebrate a project that's been in the making for almost a year. We've been working, probably a little over a year, actually. We've been working on building out a new communication system. And I'm happy to report that that communication system recently came online. And we'd like to give you the opportunity of a virtual ribbon cutting, of making the first call to our dispatch center and announcing the radio system.
All right. Are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Okay, I think.
I'm glad I'm not the mayor.
All right. I don't have to say hello, hello, or anything like that, right? This is Mayor Eichner to KPD Dispatch. Am I clear to talk?
Ten-four, all units hold the air for radio traffic. Mayor Eichner, go ahead and do traffic.
I don't think I've ever had that happen. So after much work, investment, and time, we are excited and happy to proclaim the Kerrville Public Safety Communication System, fully operational. And I would like to add a thank you to everyone who's been a part of this, but I also have a question. Are you guys going to be able to communicate with Santa when he comes on Christmas Eve with these new radios?
Ten-four, Mayor Eichner, we will communicate with him.
That sounds great. And remind him that we have a lot of gorgeous lights in our city as he flies over.
Ten-four, thank you, Mayor. KPD Dispatch.
And let me add Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone in our emergency units, our police department, the fire department. We appreciate you guys and what you do.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Chief, did you have a moment?
Thank you.
Yes, all of you have, all of you have a radio in front of you. If you want to look at it and take a look at it, it's perfectly safe to do. We hand those out to cops and firefighters, and we're famous for breaking things, and they're pretty durable.
Good, aren't you, you still have the cellophane on the front.
Yeah. Brand new.
Thank you, and we really appreciate y'all's support.
This is great. And this should make life easier for everybody, right?
Most definitely.
Good. Congratulations.
Very, very good.
Thank you very much.
So these are fully online? They're fully, fully operational?
Yay.
Do we leave them up here for them?
Kerrville's safer. Okay.
We do have one person signed up, or two, actually. Carlina and Edna, they're going to come up from the Women's Job Corps.
That's right. Thank you for reminding me. Yes. There they are.
Good evening, Council members. It's so good to see you again. You know me from my role at the Kerrville Daily Times as publisher, but over the last year, I've had the great privilege and joy to serve as the president of the Christian Women's Job Corps of Kirk County. And probably the most important work we had to do over the last year was preparing for the transition of our longtime director, Ann Buck, who retired in May, and hire her successor. And so it wasn't obvious, I don't know how it wasn't obvious at first, but Edna wasn't quite sure if she wanted to take that role, and we went on a search like we would any other to be objective in the process. But it quickly became very obvious that there was only one person to lead us into the future, and that is our new president, or our new executive director, Edna Vandiver. And she's actually been with our organization since 2013. She's operated as an operations manager, lots of extensive background in accounting. She also has the heart for this ministry and the compassion and empathy necessary to lead these women. But more than anything, and it's the one thing that was the top of our list, she is a visionary. And so our commitment is to meet the needs of our local community and the people who need our services. And so you can expect some great things, maintaining the credibility and trust we have already demonstrated, but also probably some change as she's positioned to use that vision in the future. So she'll have just a few minutes to tell you what's up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carolina, and thank you, Mayor Eichmann. And also thank you, City Council, for the many years of support that y'all have given to Christian Women's Job Corps. Christian Women's Job Corps came in 2000 to Kerrville. And when it started, it was just this little, small, one-room place, but it had a vision. And I was looking back in our history, and I found this statement. It said that Christian Women's Job Corps was reminded, was formed with this mission. It was formed with the purpose of equipping women for life and employment. And I'm happy to say that's still what we do today. And we've had a long history. We've seen, since we opened our doors in 2000, 473 women have graduated our program. These 473 women, they come from a variety of backgrounds. They're either widowed, sometimes it's an empty nest, newly divorced, some have drug and alcohol abuse, some have had legal issues, they're victims of trafficking and domestic violence. But one thing is for sure with all of these women, they're needing job skills and they're needing to re-enter the workforce, either for the first time or again. We have seen lives transformed through our 12-week program with the classes we teach. And some of them, as you, a lot of you know, it's Bible study, healthy relationship, it's life skills, it's personal discovery, it's women at work, resume writing, interview skills, computer basics, and the list goes on and on. As we enter our 23rd year, we are looking forward to building on the foundation that the former executive directors Patty Crick, Kathleen Maxwell, and Ann Buck have left behind, and to continue the simple mission of equipping women for life and employment. But as we all know, as we enter 2023, the world looks very different than it did in 2000. So when the ladies, but one thing is for sure, when the ladies walk through our door, one thing remains the same. They know, or we teach them, that God created them with a plan and a purpose. And that's what we're here for, is to make sure they find that plan and a purpose. And yes, we have some new ideas brewing because life has changed. And so we're looking at expanding our Women at Work program to include working from home and helping women find jobs because, as you know, because you've just been through this, finding childcare for women, it's very difficult. And a lot, we have a lot of single moms who need childcare, but they can't afford childcare, so therefore, they can't really afford to get the job. The jobs they're looking at, they really, it doesn't pay for that. So that's one of our big goals this year, is to really look at expanding the Women at Work to include working from home and finding those good jobs that women can do from home so that they can take care of their families. So thank you again for taking care of us and backing us and having your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, I think we have some Blue Santa people, right? You guys will just line up.
A lineup?
Over here, please. No, over here.
Yeah, why don't you face out?
We get to see your backs.
Come in, come in.
How are you?
Good. How you doing?
All right. We won't start till you.
This is not.
Is there anybody else out there we're missing? That everybody?
We've got one that was on his way back in, and I'm not sure.
Is everybody accounted for? All right, very good. Well, you are here for... Are you talking to me?
Well, we have one more member that had to make a run out to his car to get something to drink, or his blood sugar.
Oh, he left?
Oh, never mind, we're done.
Never mind. All right, so we're good to go. All right. I'm going to use some letters in here, and I'll let everybody know what they are. It's KCPAAA, which stands for the Kerrville Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. And I believe every one of you is a graduate of that, right? Okay. Are there some others in the room that have been through the academy program? Me! There's one back there, over here, over here. All right. We highly recommend it. It's a great program. So, the city of Kerrville recognizes the Kerrville Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association with the December 13, 2022 Kerrville Kindness Award. The Kerrville Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association is made up of citizen volunteers who are all graduates of the Kerrville Police Department Citizens Academy. The KCPAAA donates hundreds of hours a year to causes that benefit the citizens of Kerrville. One of the largest events that KCPAAA sponsors is the annual Blue Santa Program. Preparations for Blue Santa start months in advance. As the event approaches, shopping, wrapping, and organizing gifts becomes a tremendous undertaking for all of these volunteers. This year's Blue Santa event was held Saturday, December 10th, this past Saturday, at Ronnie Bach Kerrville RV and provided toys and food to families in need during the holiday season. Once again, the event was a fabulous success and touched many lives in our community. The Kerrville Police Department is very appreciative of this dedicated group of citizens who volunteer their time in services of others. This group truly lives up to the values represented by the Kerrville Kindness Award every day of the year and recently shown even brighter through their Blue Santa event. And this is signed by all of us, and we just want to say thank you. Would one of you like to be a spokesman and say a couple of words? This is the boss.
Blue Santa, and my husband Jeff is here. He is the longest-tenured member of the academy. He was in class number one of the Citizen Patrol.
Yay, Jeff!
Our newer members here, too. Now, Blue Santa gets all the publicity, I guess, but we have members here who drive the cop's car and hand out handicap parking tickets. We have folks here who organize and then patrol on the river with our golf car. We have people who help out with the drug takeback every year. And the more we do this, the more we have other organizations in the community to help us out. So obviously, we get lots of donations of toys and money for Blue Santa, but we also get a lot of muscles from places like Shriner College to help us lift things. We get help from the other organizations, too. So without the rest of this wonderful community, we couldn't do what we do.
All right. We appreciate you guys so much. I'm going to shake everybody's hand, but then I want you to turn around and shake a council member's hand. Good to see ya! Yeah, let's not break these. It is!
It's good to see you, Rose.
It's good to see you, too. I will, I will, I will, thank you. Thank you.
Don't worry, we need a photo op. Do we need to squeeze together to see them? I think we will, yes. I'll see if they can. You need to come closer.
You're short, jump front.
Gentlemen, okay, can, are we okay?
Let me see us.
All right, we can see the camera, we're good.
Don't move, don't move.
All right, and I will give this to the box. Thank you all. Thank you. Love.
This hides my belly.
Merry Christmas.
Hi, thank you. Good to see you. Thank you very much.
See you, happy holidays.
Eve, thank you.
I think you know.
You can go to Citizen Police Academy. And have a Merry Christmas.
You, too.
You, too.
All right, next, we have a proclamation. And this proclamation is for a poem that was written for the city of Kerrville. Is our poet here?
Yes, I'm over here.
There she is. Come on up. All right, I'm going to read this, and then we'll let you go over here to the podium and read your poem, okay? All right. Whereas the second citywide poem search for a poet who could capture the essence and awe of a Christmas in Kerrville began on the 14th of November, 2022, and whereas the citizens of Kerrville came together and shared their written memories, thoughts, visions, and stories into beautifully-written poems celebrating a Christmas in Kerrville, and of the 12 submitted poems, three were selected as finalists. And whereas the citizens of Kerrville were instrumental in coming together to select their favorite of the three poems that best captures and describes what a Christmas in Kerrville is all about. And whereas sincere gratitude is extended to Katie McMillan, who has given her talent to the citizens of Kerrville by capturing the true joy and spirit of a Christmas in Kerrville for this and future generations to enjoy. Now, therefore, I, Judy Eichner, Mayor of the City of Kerrville, Texas, do hereby proclaim on Tuesday, December 13, 2022, the poem, "Christmas in Kerrville," as the official 2022 Christmas in Kerrville poem, and encourage all citizens to join me in celebrating the written talents, talents of Katie McMillan. So in witness thereof, I have signed it. So this is... We'll let you use that, and we're going to present this to you for, with your poem inside. So I think they need to have you look their direction. All right, we'll let you go to the podium.
It's Christmas in Kerrville, which for all of us means much more than a sprinkling of reds, whites, and greens. It stretches beyond the river we love, which twinkles and shines from the lights hung above. It's more than the hope that this joyous time brings or the way that our clock tower faithfully rings. It's Christmas in Kerrville where wishes are made when Santa appears in our festive parade. Crisp air nips your nose as you stroll through downtown, surrounded by charm in this place so renowned. Small businesses buzzing with joyful gift-giving, our churches rejoice for the Lord ever living. It's Christmas in Kerrville, and glasses are raised after toasts for a year that's been worthy of praise. For the parks, for the schools, for the people we know, for how we've watched our community grow. Our traditions and culture make us who we are, and with eyes on the future, we shine like a star. It's Christmas in Kerrville, the place we love best, as we've come from the north, south, east, and the west. Whether it is, or upon a time was, the place we call home, simply because, because of the people who nod with a smile and welcome you in even after a while. Because of the hills and the views we've been gifted, whether we were born here or somehow here drifted. It's Christmas in Kerrville, how lucky are we, in this capital of the hill country, to live, work, and play in a place so serene, in this holiday season that lies in between the hustle and bustle of everyday living. Kerrville, Texas, a beauty and the gift that keeps giving. The end.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And you may shake each hand up here. Congratulations.
Thank you, that was wonderful.
We're shaking our hands, huh?
All right, good things, good things. Now, we have an award, and do we have someone here to present that award?
We do, Mr. Paxton's going to make the introduction.
Okay, all right.
Evening, Council, this is Ms. Carol Barrett. She's with the Texas Chapter of American Planning Association.
Thank you, Drew. It was my privilege this year to serve on the awards jury, and I had a lot of fun doing it, but not as much fun as I did today in Kerrville. My husband and I drove down from Spiceburg, went in and out of shops, bought Christmas presents for each other, had dinner at Billie Jean's, pretty much a perfect day. So I want to thank you for that experience. The Texas Chapter awarded recognition to Kerrville for its implementation plan because it included critical information. Who was going to implement the plan? When was that going to happen? What were they going to do? And most importantly, how much was all of this going to cost? And when you look at the city's website, you can see a lot of evidence that the city is truly committed to plan implementation. Because the Kerrville 2050 Plan is a, is an outstanding, comprehensive planning document. There are big ideas in there. It required participation from all of the city departments. It's focused both on the intermediate and the very long term. Years ago, I lived in Annapolis, Maryland, when Donald Schaefer was the mayor of Baltimore. He subsequently became the governor, so he must have been doing something right. And on the weekends, Donald Schaefer would drive around in Baltimore looking for things that could be better, that could be fixed, that could be improved. And he would leave notes on the desks of his department heads over the weekend about things he wanted them to do. And he had this stamp that he put on his notes that said, had the initials DTBYSD. Did he buy Sid? Do this before you sit down. He was, he knew that great places don't just happen. And you have that in common with Governor Schaefer. Great places require care and maintenance and investment and energy, and honestly, they require love. All of those are evident in the documents that we reviewed from Kerrville. So it is my pleasure to present the Gold Award for Plan Implementation to the Kerrville City Council from the Texas Chapter of the American Planning Association.
Sam, stand with me and we'll... All right.
Thank you.
And please shake everybody's hand up here because they've all had a part of that. Thank you so much. Oh, should I put mine down? Did you put your hand up? Congratulations. Thank you, thank you. Nice, that's pretty.
It is pretty, isn't it?
It is. Well, I think we, we need to take a picture of this and send it to Mark McDaniel because the 2050 Plan has his name all over it. So that is great. And it's a plan that's going to continue as the years go on. So one of the best things that have, that has happened to Kerrville. All right, we are ready for our Visitors and Citizens Forum. Shelley, I believe you said we have six?
Yes, ma'am, we have six.
Okay, all right, let's go ahead, and we will entertain those now.
William Fitch?
My name is Bill Fitch, and I am a resident of the city of Kerrville. The Bible in Hosea, chapter 4, verse 6, says, "My people are destroyed for lack of knowledge." I found something that to me is alarming. In 1958, W. Cleon Scousen wrote the book, "The Naked Communist," an exposé on how the communists were infiltrating our country. He found that there were 45 goals that they had set out for the takeover of the United States. Some of you will remember Nikita Khrushchev, the leader of the Soviet Union from 1953 to 1964. This quote from him was rather prophetic. "You Americans are so gullible, no, you won't accept communism outright, but we'll keep feeding you small doses of socialism until you finally wake up and find you've already become a communist nation." These 45 goals were read into the Congressional Record in 1963. I want to share just three of them. Eliminate the laws, this is number 24, eliminate the laws governing obscenity by calling them censorship and a violation of free speech and free press. Those who have fought us on this library issue keep complaining that we're trying to censor these books. Well, goal number 24 has been completed. Goal number 25, break down... Goal number 25, break down cultural standards of morality by promoting pornography, obscenity in books, in magazines, motion pictures, radio, and TV. How sad. Our little town has already affirmed this in their library. As a bonus, number 27, infiltrate the churches and replace revealed religion with social religion, discredit the Bible. One of you did do that. You said that there was pornography, bestiality, and rape in the Bible. And I won't argue that, there is. But it's not promoting it. It's talking about the fact that it's sin and that there's horrible consequences. Here are just a couple of reviews for this book. The Naked Communist lays out the whole progressive plan. It's unbelievable how fast this has been accomplished in our country. That's by Ben Carson. We believe the moral code. Communism denies innate right or wrong. As Cleon Skousen has said in his timely book, The Naked Communist, the communist has convinced himself that nothing is evil which answers the call of expediency. This is the most damnable doctrine. People who truly account such a philosophy have neither conscience nor honor. Force, trickery, lies, broken promises are wholly justified. This by Ezra Taft Benson, Secretary of Agriculture under Dwight Eisenhower. And finally, Roman, I want to thank you for your efforts in this matter. As the youngest member of the council, you seem to have the greatest insight into the damage that can be done by this. You've stood for righteousness and mercy for our children. I thank you for that. I've asked Shelley here to give the city attorney, the city manager, and each of you a copy of those 45 goals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ruben Aguilar?
My name is Ruben Aguilar, and I reside in Fredericksburg, Texas.
Sir, I'm sorry, we are not going to let you speak. You are not from Kerrville, and it is not relevant.
When I order, Mary, he doesn't have to be from Kerrville.
I know he does not have to be.
So that he can speak?
Yes, I contacted the Secretary of State, they said, yeah, you can speak.
The last time that you spoke to us, sir, you made comments that are not appropriate for this body.
No, it's quite all right, ma'am. I'll honor that, okay, very well. I'm terribly sorry to have bothered you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
It's all right. And Roman, thank you, sir. God bless you, all right.
That's a violation of our rules that should be happening.
Nikki Keynes?
Hi, Nikki Keynes, I live here in Kerrville. I'm coming because you can't change the past. The city council meeting that happened on the 8th also happened to coincide with an election. And I'm here because there was a lot of us who had to make a choice whether we came to speak before council or served our duty as an election official. So what I'm just asking is that in the future, if there are any other elections that happen to coincide with a city council meeting, if you would at least consider moving the city council meeting. And I say that because this, in November, since there wasn't a meeting at the end of the month, it could have, the 8th could have been moved a week into the future, like say on the 15th, and more of us could have been here to share our thoughts and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Guerrero?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Karen Guerrero. My address is 307 Lakewood in Kerrville. I serve as the president of Kerrville Pets Alive, an all-volunteer nonprofit organization serving Kerr County. I am here to wag and not bark and share a little update about Kerrville Pets Alive. On behalf of our Board of Directors, we thank the community for their support of Proposition C for a new Kerr County Animal Control Shelter in the recent Kerr County bond election. We believe a new shelter is long overdue, and we believe, we look forward to our involvement in the planning process. I'd also like to update the city about some of our recent events and successes. On November the 12th, KPA held our biannual pet wellness clinic, where over 200 pets were served in a three-hour period. And all 345 vaccines were administered, and 114 pets received free microchips registered to both their owners and Kerr County Animal Services. This past weekend, December the 10th and the 11th, we held our annual filler bowls, pet food drive. Once again, the community was extremely generous. Over 3,000 pounds of food was donated within 13 hours. The food will be distributed this weekend at the Doyle Community Center Pavilion between 10:00 and 2:00 this Saturday, December the 17th. In other pet news, the Kerr County Animal Services Advisory Board will meet Thursday, December the 15th, at the Kerr County Courthouse. A discussion regarding the timeline for the new Kerr County Animal Services Animal Control Shelter is on the agenda. The public is welcome to attend that meeting. KPA's mission is to serve Kerr County pets from euthanasia. We are proud to report that the pet euthanases at Kerr County Animal Services continue to decline. In 2017, 62% of impounded cats and 22% of dogs were euthanized. The latest report from November 2022 noted the euthanasia of only 3.7% of cats and 5.4% of dogs. If you're considering adopting a pet, now is the time. For the first time in three years, the county has allowed us to have a pet adoption this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Kerr County Animal Shelter at 3600 534 in Kerrville. The shelter is currently very full with adoptable cats and dogs. Photos of the adoptable pets will be available on the KPA Facebook page as well as the Kerr County Animal Services Facebook page. The $50 adoption fee applies to spay and neuter surgery and includes a microchip, rabies vaccine, and county registration. Lastly, Kerrville Pets Alive thanks the City of Kerrville for their continued support of our efforts. We have big plans for 2023, including a focused effort to provide available and affordable spay and neuter services for our community pet owners. Thank you so much, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
George Peruti?
George Peruti, 1616 Glen Road. So I've got two things. One, just an announcement. Christmas Eve, Vincent Vogel is doing a community meal. Again, if any of you have seen it, he's done it a couple of times where he's just open to the whole community. His goal, his vision, is to just have community come together and eat together. That's really all it's about. It's going to be Christmas Eve between 12:00 and 4:00 at the Doyle School Community Scanner, and that 12:00 to 4:00 is, or until we run out. We're planning on, the last couple of times he's done it, he's served over 300, 350 meals. So that's what we're shooting for, and so come early and, you know, come with your family, come with your friends, or come alone and sit with somebody you've never met. So that's the announcement part. That was all I was going to do, but the Christmas in Kerrville thing reminded me that we haven't reported on the parade here, right? We've had the parade after your last, the November meeting, right? So I'm going to give you a little story about my experience in the parade. So I was on the Doyle School Community float, and we showed up to the staging area at K-Pub like we're supposed to. We were like the first float, and so me and a couple of other people, well, one other, Jose, decided we're going to go walk along the parade line to see all 100 floats. So we go do that. We were told we were going to leave at 5:00. And we get out there and we're walking around, and someone said, well, officially, we're going to leave at 5:30 to go to the front of the parade. Well, we're coming back, we're at float 70, and our float is float 30. And we get a call from Coach Pfeiffer, hey, where are you? We're going to have to leave in a minute. We're like, yeah, we're told 5:30, so we're calling. So we start walking, we keep walking, and the floats start moving. So they're going to leave without us, right? They don't even care. And so we start jogging, me and the other guy, we start jogging, and they just keep going. And they're about to, our float's about four floats back of the turn onto Memorial, and I'm like, I give up. And so I stop, and they stopped. So I start running again. Jose's falling back, I don't care. I'm going, I'm going to catch up to the float. So I start running, I catch up, it's moving, and I have to decide, I'm gassed. Do I jump onto a moving float, risk falling off? No, so I jump on. I make it, I sit down, I look back, Jose's back there, I don't care. So we get, we go to the second staging area where the parade starts, at Memorial and Water Street, basically, and you're going to stop there. So we all pulled up and stopped, and I'm figuring Jose caught a ride with one of the other floats, which he did. And another person who was late getting to us, Karen Maddox, ended up catching a float with him, she comes waving by in a golf cart, anyways. They get on the float, so now we're stopped again, so they get off and they meet up with our float. Okay, no problem. So we're all sitting on the float, talking, waiting for it to start moving again. And we've got all our people set up on the back, on the trailer, and the, me and Karen are sitting on, we're standing on the back of the trailer. And lo and behold, it starts moving, okay? We didn't know, and if you've ever sat on a moving train or something like that, stood there, the first movement startles you. Well, I was quick enough to realize that I'm going to fall over, and so I jumped off the back. Karen wasn't so quick, so she stepped, one step back, and the trailer kept going, and so her foot is caught on the trailer, she's now sitting on the ground, and the trailer moves on. So keep in mind, this is the second time my float has abandoned me at this one parade, right? So it goes off, and they're just going off a little ways, and they're going to stop again, and the float behind us, if you give me a second, I'll finish it up.
Four minutes.
You won't let me finish it?
No, I'm going to let you finish, I'm sorry. You'll have to tell everybody individually.
I want to hear it later.
Keep this on the cliffhanger there.
Yes, hello, my name is Ian Doherty, resident of Kerrville for 20 years. Very grateful to be in Texas. I came down to Texas about 20 years ago, November 1st, 2001, immediately after 9/11, and I'm grateful I'm here, incredibly happy. Hill Country is a wonderful place, and so is Kerrville. I am here to do a couple different things. One, to remind you that the issue with, for instance, the library and the grooming isn't ever going to end. One, because we said we will not let this end and become something that's swept under the rug. Two, you also just recently had a teacher doing the same things at the Hal Peterson Middle School. Now, a lot of people would say, oh, well, the library, isolated incident. No, it wasn't. Because obviously, as you can tell, it's continued, and it's continued not there, it's continued there. And until we get, for instance, a drag queen's storytime in the library, what else after that? As I said, I'm here to remind you, we will not go away. Second, I will also say that the city council chambers need to be opened to the public. Right there, you could have a total of maybe 20, maybe 30 people right there against the back of the wall. Why isn't that open? I've been here when there's people that are just absolutely overflowing out there, and there's no reason that should ever happen. This is the people's chambers. This is the people's chambers. No matter what you want to say, no matter what anybody wants to think, this is our chambers. And three, I wanted to address what just happened. Mr. Ruben Aguilar was a very gracious individual by stepping down instead of actually making a scene. However, what happened was reprehensible. That was a horrible thing. At the very least, very least, that man should get an apology face to face. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's the end of the citizen speakers.
Thank you. We will move on to number four, consent agenda. We have a number of items on there, Council. Are there any that anyone needs to have pulled?
I have a quick question about, just, I mean, literally very quick about item 4F.
And I'll pull 4B and 4D.
4B?
I'm sorry, 4B?
B and D.
D, do you want to pull 4F?
Yes, 4F.
Yes.
And if there's no more, Council, I'll move to approve the rest of the items, 4A, C, E, G, and H.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, it passes. All right, let's look at 4B. Roman?
This is the resolution establishing the city's intent to become a certified dark sky community. Real brief questions. What does it mean to be a certified dark sky community? The reason I ask that is because I want to know if, it's my understanding that those are governed by the Dark Sky, International Dark Sky Association. And so I was curious, if this resolution of intent is adopted, and we move forward with becoming a certified dark sky community, and then we go forward with adopting a dark sky ordinance, does that international association require us to put certain types of regulations in our ordinance, or is that completely left up to the city and our local control?
The International Dark Sky Association does have a set of minimum standards for the ordinance, and the ordinance that we introduced in the workshop, and we'll bring them back to Council in January, does include all of those minimum guidelines.
Okay, is there a way that we can, I can get a copy of what those minimum guidelines are, so I know what at least needs to be in the ordinance if we move forward?
They're also noted in your red line ordinance.
It's required by?
Which ones are required and which criteria is noted.
The one that we just got today? Okay, all right, I'll review that. So I'm good for now. It's the actual language in the ordinance, we just got the draft today, so I'll be reviewing that, but appreciate, that's.
Okay, you want to make a motion, and we'll approve it right now?
Sure, I'll move to approve resolution number 81-2022.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes. Thank you. 4D, Roman?
This is the procedural rules for the zoning board of adjustments. I was curious about rule number five that we have. It says that all motions must be formed in the positive. For example, I move to approve case number, whatever that is. So I was curious, why are we restricting the language of the board members to have to, on what they have to say to the motion, and why they have to do it in the affirmative? And what would the case be? How are they going to do it if they want to deny a motion, and nobody wants to make a motion to approve it?
Right. The board of adjustment, because the board of adjustment has separate rules under state law, they have to have four out of five votes for a case to be approved. In my experience, even if a member is recommending denial of a case, the motion to deny and then a split vote any direction causes quite a bit of confusion, especially for our citizens that aren't used to that procedure. So it becomes very clear to the citizen, the applicant, if there's a motion to approve, if that motion fails, they know they're denied. So it's just to help bring clarity to that very particular situation for ZBA, for the citizens.
So I'm a little bit confused on why that is. If that's what the rest of Council wants to do, fine, but in my experience, I mean, I think even when we're on council, if we have an item before us and we don't want to approve it, we make a motion to deny it, or to, whatever, whatever the case may be, to decline it. Not all the time do we make a motion to approve when we don't want to. And so the confusion from me is if all five, or how many members, are there seven?
Five stage members.
Five, and the two alternates, right? Okay. So all five of the members that are there don't want a motion, don't want to approve something. One of them's going to have to make a motion to approve it, and then they're all going to have to vote that motion down, instead of just saying, I move to deny this one, and then vote in that way.
Again, the goal was clarity for the citizen, not the board. We trained the board members, staff is aware of the situation. It's just to help the citizens understand when those cases are brought forward, that they don't leave the room confused. that they don't leave the room confused.
An individual, elected official, and a member of council, if I had to make a motion like that, I'd be very confused. So, that's just from my standpoint. So, we don't have to luckily, but I don't, that's why I don't know why we're having to restrict our board to do that, but.
Okay, Roman, are you ready for a motion?
Yeah, is there, do we have any flexibility on that? Or is that staff is firm that that needs to be in there?
It's recommendation, and the board of adjustment approved it. It's given their recommendation for approval as well. It, there's nothing hard and fast. Again, it's just trying to, trying to be clear for the citizens. So, it's, it is just a recommendation, there's nothing hard and fast.
All right. What does council think about changing that out? So, they don't have to be put in awkward position to say if they wanna deny something, they have to make a motion to approve it first and then vote it down?
I feel like if they approve that, then that's the rules that they wanna live under, so.
Did they create these rules, or were they presented to them by staff?
Presented to them by staff.
They could, but they had an opportunity to make that change, so.
I'm good with leaving it as it is for, I under, sat on ZBA, I understand the clarity for the citizens, so. Any other comments?
I also served on that board.
Okay. All right, Roman, then are you ready for a motion?
Sure.
Or is somebody, go ahead.
I'm not gonna, I'm not making a motion.
I'll move, I'll move that we approve item four D on the consent.
Second.
Second, all in favor, raise your hands, and it passes, thank you. All right, Kim, four F.
I'm sorry, just a quick question here. I just wanted to be reminded, I know y'all told me this on multiple times, so this is just a reminder for me. When we have an unanticipated expense, where are we pulling the funding for, for those expenses?
So, there's a couple of different places that we can pull it from. If it's, if there's money in the operating budget, we can pull it from there. We also have a contingency fund that we take from.
What are we doing in this case?
This particular one, we are bringing it from.
I didn't know what that account number was.
Yeah, let me look at what account number it's coming in. It's the water and wastewater.
Part of our, our undesignated funds within the water wastewater capital.
Okay, capital projects?
That's right.
Okay.
Capital projects, yes. Yeah, so we, so we have some generalized well funding. We knew that we were gonna be coming in, unfortunately, because we had drought conditions last summer, and, and we really haven't had any significant rain. We're continuing to improve well operations around the community so we can be prepared if we do continue to have those ongoing drought conditions next summer. And so, we did have some, we were anticipating funding needing to be utilized within the capital projects.
Okay, that was my only question. I just, when I see a budgeted amount of zero and a dollar amount that we're assigning to it, just as a reminder, where's?
We weren't sure that it was gonna be needed for the H Street well, but we prioritize that project, given where, where we're at with that one.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, ready for a motion?
Yes, I will move that we approve item four H.
Four F?
I'm sorry, four F, we've already done four H.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have two of them over here. And all in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes. Thank you very much. All right, that takes care of all of our consent items. We will move on to five A.
Resolution number eighty-two dash twenty-two, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize an independent living facility for seniors on property generally located adjacent to Memorial Boulevard, State Highway twenty-seven, between this intersection with Mica Road and Laurel Street, comprising an approximate zero point five-three acres and more commonly known as twenty-nine sixteen Memorial Boulevard. Said property is located within a light commercial zoning district C two, and making said permit subject to certain conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Yes, Drew, take us away.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, this is a conditional use permit for an independent living facility for seniors. This is behind the existing office on this property. Here's the site plan as proposed. Excuse me too far. Planning and zoning commission on November third recommended the case with approval of unanimous vote with the two conditions, that it be tied to the site plan, and that the minimum parking shall be consistent with that of the multifamily development of section sixty dash one oh four, table two, number forty. It is consistent with the Kerrville twenty fifty plan because there is no change in base zoning. It is only a conditional use permit. I'd be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Okay, I have one, Drew. Is the present building that is at the front of that property, that's going to stay?
Yes.
It will, okay.
And the applicant is also here to explain the project.
All right. Does anyone have a question before we have the applicant speak to us?
I just have a question about emergency vehicles and getting in and out of there. Is it, are they using, what is that called, EA, a T turnaround, or what is that?
It's that T hammerhead, basically, they're able to back up in and out of that driveway area. You can see towards the back.
Okay, and where are, where are vehicles parked in those areas?
This obviously is more of a concept plan, it's not a final site plan. So, they have not gone through development services for the development review committee yet.
Okay.
Fire marshal may have seen this, I'm not positive. Obviously, fire code will have to apply, parking code will be required. So, there may be some minor adjustments. I think the key is the number of units and the proximity on the property lines and so on. But those final details will be weighed in on by development services.
And each one of those is an individual?
Yes.
Okay.
Question, thank you.
All right, would the applicant like to make a few comments?
Rick Perry, and I am the owner of the property. The existing structure is my office, which is caring senior service, serving Kerrville for the past eighteen years. We provide caregivers in the home for the elderly. And these are going to be quote-unquote granny pods behind my office. So, they will be small studio apartments, primarily for one person, because it's a studio, possibly a couple. So, we're gonna limit number of vehicles, we're gonna have other restrictions there with regard to the property. And then we will provide some services if they require it or want it through caring senior service as well. I've met with the fire marshal, we've talked about the ingress and egress for, for the, to service the fire code and the, the hammerhead driveway coming in and out, and, and the amount of room. And we've done a flow application for the fire hydrant that's out front, and, and so that's already in process. And so, it'll just be a matter of where we're gonna put the units and how they're gonna fit on the property.
All right, counsel, any?
And this is, is, this is short-term housing, long-term housing?
It'll be long-term.
Okay.
And it would be sixty-five or over, fifty-five?
That's undetermined at this point.
It's not been determined, okay. All right, anyone else, questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Oh, public hearing, that's right, thank you. At six fifty-eight, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Okay, I, I would suggest you vote for it. I mean, the applicant's the one voting for it, but I just have questions about sort of the compatibility of what we normally do and what's happening here. You see the property, and you see what's more or less surrounding where the units are gonna be, which is the back part of this property. That's essentially junkyard. So, that's a body shop on the, what seems on the left. And that's, I think, like a leftover truck. It's owned by a trucking company, that backlot. And it seems like if, if it was being done in a reverse order, we wouldn't allow those truck things to be there next to the residential. And just kinda, I, I was just wondering if you guys are even aware of that? And like I say, the, the site plan pushes all those units back to where that's what they're gonna be seeing. I mean, I assume there'll be a fence or something. But the other is, I didn't understand, I'm not familiar exactly with the setbacks that are required in this type of thing, but the setbacks seem pretty small on what that site plan was. Anyways, that's all.
Okay, anyone else on to that? Yes, in a public hearing, yes?
Okay, yeah, and, and George, I see what you're saying there. My property is two doors down. Okay, now, the property immediately to the right of that property is a single-family residence.
Right.
Okay, and, and my land is about an acre, which makes Mr. Perry's lot, do you know the size of your lot, sir?
Twenty-five, three.
About half acre? Okay, but my point being that because of the zoning, it's, it's zoned C two, which is light commercial, there's really unlimited possibilities of what people can do with that property there, you know, aside from putting a Walmart.
I was questioning zoning, I was just questioning the actual use.
Yeah, but when you brought up the, the junkyards and stuff, you said if, if it were reversed, we probably wouldn't allow those there. And that does affect the zoning, because it is light commercial.
Okay, any other comments, questions, counsel? Do we have a motion? Oh, I've got to, I'm sorry, we haven't done this for a while. At seven oh one, we will close the public hearing, thank you, Kim. Now, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number eighty-two dash twenty-two.
All in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes unanimously, thank you. Five B, Shelley?
Resolution number eighty-three dash twenty-two, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental on the property consisting of lot H, block five, Pueblo Hills addition, and more commonly known as nineteen sixteen Leslie. Said property is located within a medium-density residential zoning district R two, making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. There is one citizen speaker signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Drew?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, this is the last set of conditional use permits we have for the short-term rental units that are being reviewed under the old code. So, these are either R one or R two zoning the next five items under that old, the old version of the ordinance. This is a conditional use permit at nineteen sixteen Leslie. And it is zoned R two, and on November third, planning and zoning commission recommended approval with a four-two vote.
Is the applicant here, and it's someone to speak?
Okay, I don't believe so, unless they're out front.
All right. No, okay. At seven oh two, we will open the public hearing.
Roger Palmer?
Roger Palmer, nineteen fifty Leslie Drive, Kerrville, Texas. This is in Pueblo Hills Town Home Association. And our covenants, restrictions, and conditions state a lease must be at least one year and no short-term rentals allowed on the property. Well, from what I understand, the HOA rules, this is a homeowner's association, and HOA's covenants, restrictions trumps city code. So, therefore, I ask that you honor our HOA with no short-term rentals. And also, I spoke to Brittany who owns nineteen sixteen, and she told me that she is withdrawing her request for a short-term rental.
Okay, that will be between her and the city, Mr. Palmer.
That's what I told her to call the city.
And the other thing is, we do not get involved with HOAs. That would be, that would have to be taken up by the HOA association. They would have to go, they would be the ones to go back to whoever wants to do this and tell them that they cannot do it. But that is not our purview, we do not do that.
Okay. So, yeah, our CCRs are on record at the Kerr County Courthouse.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
To, to Mr. Hayes or, or staff? I've never had a situation where we've been given some form of notice that the applicant wishes to withdraw an application. So, I don't know if we should consider that and table this to find that out, or what we should do at this point.
I think that needs to come from the owner, that's not our decision, unless we have something in writing.
Correct, typically, we require something in writing.
Okay. All right, at seven oh five, we will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion? Based on the information that we have in front of us, counsel?
Would there be harm in post, tabling this until our next meeting? For table this until our next meeting, pending resolution of, the question, does the applicant continuing or is the applicant withdrawing?
Second.
If we can, can we have discussion on that motion?
Yes.
I just wanna say, I don't know if we should table it because another member of the community has brought that to us. I'm not saying you're being untruthful with us, sir, I have no idea of the circumstances. But to me, if we allow this to happen, that opens up for any case that comes before council. If the applicant's not here, if we haven't gotten any other information, one person to come to council and say, we believe, or we've gotten notice, or we have some type of belief that they're withdrawing, and then now council, upon that information, without anything from the property owner, will then either table or dismiss it. I think that just sets a precedent that we probably shouldn't do. And instead, if the motion to table is withdrawn, I'll make a motion to approve it. And, I mean, I assume they can withdraw their permit and just tell the city we don't want it anymore. And then we can, they can come back to us and we can just revoke it, if that's the case.
That's why I said, I think we need to make our decisions, just a reminder, based on the information that we have before us, so.
I understand.
So, is your, you wanna continue your motion, Joe?
If it's voted down, it's voted down.
Okay, all right, we have a motion to withdraw, to. To table. To the next meeting.
Any resolution, whether the owner is continuing their application or withdrawing, right?
All in favor? I'm sorry, all in favor?
Wait a second, we have a motion and a second.
A second. Table to the next meeting.
Um, can I give myself a second to think by discussing how loud? I, I, I agree with both sides, so I'm not sure what I'm gonna do, because, because in this case.
It's hearsay, I understand that, but we're only, we're only holding it from, until our next meeting.
But.
It's fair to the applicant to do that.
Well, without knowing that, if, if we vote, if we vote, vote this in, let's just clarify. The applicant can come and say, I do not want a short-term rental, and it goes away, and that's the end of it.
They can, no, staff will bring it back to council and we'll just revoke it.
You, you all would have to, we'd have to bring you another basic resolution that would revoke.
Bring it back and revoke.
Well. New registration piece, if they don't register, then they won't.
This is the zoning piece, that's the permit piece, yeah. Yeah, so if they, if they.
I mean, if they'll lose their conditional use if they don't.
It would still require council action to revoke it.
But I'm just.
Within the six months.
Correct.
There's another way, if they do not apply by June, then they lose that conditional use piece.
Correct.
If we. Conditional use would be.
We adopt the short-term rental.
Right.
Registration piece after this.
Conditional use permit still does not automatically go away, but it would be eligible.
Go by not, if we approve the conditional use, while of having formal action.
So, they're not even gonna use it within that period of time when it gets to June.
Then they don't register and they lose the use.
They're gone anyway, so.
Yes. All right, counsel, are we, are we ready?
Ready to vote.
Kim, are you ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, and it fails three to two.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number eighty-three dash twenty-two.
A second? Second, we have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And we have one, two, three, four, five. And we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, all right, thank you very much.
If you have to revisit, we'll revisit.
We'll revisit, that's exactly right. Okay, 5D, shall we?
Resolution Number 84-2022, a resolution granting a conditional use permit for a short-term rental on the property consisting of Lot F, Block 5, Pueblo Hills Edition, and more commonly known as 1924 Leslie. Said property is located within a medium-density residential zoning district R2, and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. There is one citizen speaker signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Thank you, Drew?
Thank you, ma'am, this is 1924 Leslie Drive, also zoned R2. On November 3rd, Planning and Zoning recommended the case with a 4-2 vote. Please answer any questions.
Right, is, is there an applicant that you know of?
I don't think they're here either.
All right, at 7:11, we will open the public hearing.
Roger Palmer.
Roger Palmer, 1950 Leslie Drive, Kerrville, Texas. Again, this is a Pueblo Hills Town Home Association. Our covenants, conditions, restrictions states no, a lease, a minimum of one-year lease for a home, and no short-term rentals. And this is a Town Home Association, and the applicant chose to withdraw. Is that 1924 is up for sale on the market? Right now. That person, Rachel Tinsley, has chose to withdraw short-term rentals.
Awesome, thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Did you open the?
Can I just ask, I mean, I understand that the city doesn't enforce deed restrictions or homeowners association, but if they have factual knowledge of them, are you prohibited from honoring them and not creating a conflict? You can't, you can't avoid creating the conflict?
It is not our.
I'm not asking you, yeah, I know, it's not your job to enforce them, but if you know of what action you're taking is crossing it, that's your legal opinion or is that the real?
We don't have, we don't have a document in front of us.
No, but if, if it was presented, would you be able to honor it? That's the question.
That's not the situation that we're in right now.
I'd say that's a tough situation because if we were to take that and deny it based on that information, I would say that's in a way, as a fact, a way of enforcing them in a way, I mean, that's probably, right, that's probably a question for another branch of government, not us, but if it's taken there, that's all.
Yes.
Bruce Drakey, 615 Earl Garrett. It's absolutely appropriate for us not to take into consideration homeowners association, CCNRs, and the biggest reason is because they change. Just like our ordinances and resolutions change over time, CCNRs change over time. And it's not our purview to enforce those or to address those, that's a civil matter, and I, I very strongly feel about the importance of CCNRs, and have been, I've been a president of more than one HOA. They're very important, we need to actively, as an HOA, defend them as this gentleman is, but that's not for the city to do. And, and if we start doing that, we open ourselves up to all kinds of things. So just, just an opinion, thinking about from my background and my experience in HOAs.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else? At 7:14, we will close the public hearing, do we have a motion?
Just have a comment.
The map is shown. Certainly looks like an empty lot.
The aerial and the townhomes and the parcels obviously do not align. You can see the.
Very short-term rental.
Very short-term rental, right. The drawn parcel to the north is actually the open space between the units.
The top row is Resolution Number 84-2022.
Second? We have a second from Brenda, all in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous, thank you. Let's move on to 5D.
Resolution Number 85-2022, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of Block 14, Block 2, Galleria Estates Edition, and more commonly known as 811 Lloyd. Said property is located within a single-family residential zoning district R1, and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Drew?
Thank you, ma'am, this is 811 Lloyd's, and it says zoned R1, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with a 4-2 vote.
This is near the other two units?
It is.
Block over, yes.
The. The other two units are right on the edge of here.
One of them doesn't have a roof, the other one.
All right, is there anyone to speak from ownership?
The applicant could not be here, but I think their representation is.
Okay, all right, would you like to? Yes, please.
Yes, they're unable to be here this evening, but my name is Denise Morris, and I'm with Cozy Vacation Rentals. So this property is actually going to be maintained by a management company. It's not individually listed on Airbnb or VRBO, it is through a management company. We do list on those sites that there are terms and conditions that all of our guests must adhere to when they stay at any of our properties.
And you're local?
We're based in Fredericksburg, but we have properties here, Comfort, Blanco, so just this surrounding Hill Country area, yes, ma'am.
Any questions for her, counsel? Thank you. At this time, do we have a motion for 5D? Oh, that's right, I had it right in front of me. At 7:16, we will open the public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to speak? At 7:16, we will close the public hearing, and now we are ready for a motion.
I'll move that we approve Resolution Number 85-2022.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous, thank you. All right, 5D.
Resolution Number 86-2022, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of Lots 4, 5, and 6, Block 8, Hill Crest Edition, and more commonly known as 1001 Prescott. Said property is located within a single-family residential zoning district R1, and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. We do have one citizen speaker signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
This is 1001 Prescott, as Ms. McLaughlin stated, is single-family R1, and the Planning Commission approved this, or recommended the case for approval with a 4-2 vote.
Is there anyone, ownership-wise, to speak?
Don't believe so.
Okay, at 7:18, we will open the public hearing.
Mary Kay Lamont.
I'm not here to wag my tail, okay? But how would you like to live surrounded by short-term rentals on three sides of your home? My name is Mary Kay Lamont, and I'm a retired teacher. I have lived at 969 Prescott Street for 19 years. I've worked diligently over these years to improve my fixer, and it's become a nice, comfortable retirement home. I'm proud to say my neighbors have done the same. So now, perhaps all of our diligence and our property pride has brought us into this situation. We are honest, hard-working, tax-paying citizens. Nevertheless, now I find myself directly surrounded on three sides by three separate short-term rentals, northwest and east. And I gave a map to the mayor, where I, does, see the blue roof over there? That's my house, that's my property. Across the street, that's one, across the fence on the other side, that's the other one, that's, that's three of them. So if this, this, it would be three sides if this one is, is approved tonight. Now, I have a fourth new neighbor behind me, across the alley, on the south side of my property. He bought a divided lot behind me, his name is Red Post, and he hoped to be here tonight. I don't think he's here. He is building a new retirement home to be close to hospitals. He too is unhappy and opposes this permit. We both deliberately bought in this R1 area to avoid this kind of encroachment. We also oppose apartments, mini-marts, and car washes, but at least they would have on-site management. On the other hand, the Planning and Zoning Commissioners seem to think little hotels and investors are more important than private, single-family property owners. They consider established, good-faith, R1 ownership and homesteads as indivisible. That's how we were made to feel last month at their meeting. Or maybe they consider us just a nuisance when it comes to developing a 100-year-old neighborhood to collect hotel taxes and increase tourism. For long-term retirees like myself, this impacts our property taxes because of over-improving for the neighborhood. The house in question costs more than $500,000, that's half a million dollars, not including landscaping, because it has no landscaping. The bottom line is, it's the Hill Crest homeowners versus the little hotels. Please rescue us from this invasion, because I'm told the only enforcement will be up to me to call the police when it gets too noisy, drunkenness, and parking congestion, like in Fredericksburg. In conclusion, planning and zoning is appointed, however, you, the mayor, and city council are elected. I hope this fact can save us from this nightmare. Thank you for the time, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
All right, at 7:22, we will open the public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to speak?
You had, you had opened the.
Have I opened it?
That's okay.
Okay, we, 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 is there, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right, then, at 7:22, we will close the public hearing. All right, counsel, what is your pleasure?
I'll just go ahead and address the constituents who just spoke. I just don't want you to feel like you were ignored while you were talking. Not saying anything, but I understand your concerns, we've been working through this for a while now, over a year. And I understand the concerns on the other side for those who are wanting to operate their short-term rentals. This is a balance of property rights, and I understand where you're coming from, and I understand what you're wanting. Respectfully, I just don't believe I'd be able to go that direction, taking away somebody else's right to be able to do what they want with the property, as long as it's not infringing on yours, you know, your property rights and what you can do in your property. I think they have the ability to do that, and we're working on those regulations to make sure that doesn't happen, and so, in the future.
I'll have a place on this big job.
That's definitely your right too, yes, ma'am, thank you for being here, though.
Anything to say? All right, do we, are we ready to entertain a vote, do we have one?
I'll move that we approve Resolution Number 86-2022.
That was to approve, yes. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all right, all in favor, raise your right hand. And opposed, we have none, and it is passed.
Resolution Number 87-2022, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of Lot 3, Block 1, Jenkins Edition, more commonly known as 3410 Riverside. Said property is located within a single-family residential zoning district R1, and making said permit subject to conditions and restrictions. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
I'll get it right by the end of the evening, yes, Drew?
Thank you, Mayor, this is 3410 Riverside Drive, zoned R1, and Planning Commission recommended approval with a 4-2 vote.
Okay, is there anyone from ownership here that we know of?
Don't believe so.
All right, at 7:25, we will open the public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to speak? All right, at 7:25, we will close the public hearing, do we have a motion? Or questions, or comments?
I move we approve Resolution Number 87-2022.
We have a second?
A second.
We have a second, all in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes, all right, thank you very much.
Maybe that was the last one.
That was the last one. That was the last one, right, Drew?
That was the last one.
Won't have, we have none on the docket for, for January.
Correct.
Yay. All right, at this time, let's move on to 6A.
Ordinance Number 2023-01, an ordinance announcing a tract of land into the corporate limits of the city of Kerrville, Texas. Such property making up approximately 4.45 acre, 4.45 acres, and generally located adjacent to and south of Kerrville-Shrinner Park, more commonly known as 2511 State Highway 173, Banderas Highway. Such property more specifically described in this ordinance as being located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of and adjacent to the city limits. Adopting a service agreement establishing the zoning for the annexed property as a mixed-use MU zoning district, and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Drew?
Thank you, Mayor, this is an annexation of approximately 4.45 acres along Banderas Highway. I did have one correction in your agenda bill or statement that says we had one comment in opposition. That is a typo, we had no comments.
No.
In favor or in opposition. Again, the property is inside the ETJ, outside the city limits, so there is no current zoning. Here is their concept plan.
So do we know what the mixed-use building?
I know part of their target was going to be a hotel, but obviously, mixed-use does have other options as well, so they could have hotel and other pieces. Still in their conceptual phase as well, so. But just a general idea of footprint and location based on floodplain and setbacks. Is within Strategic Catalyst Area Number 10, which follows Banderas Highway and Wadley River Bank. Now you can see a little larger image of that, highlighting some of the to-be-developed or prime-for-development areas, including this property. Adjacent zoning is Kerrville-Shrinner Park is public and institutional. And on November 3rd, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the case with unanimous vote.
Yes, you may ask questions.
This is, one thing I was thinking as I was reading through the packet. When we do a unincorporated, or any zoning change, would it be too, would it be too cumbersome to ask for just a reference to the land use table for that piece of zoning? Just because I was thinking mixed-use when I was looking at this, I didn't have time to go to the land use table to see what all of, I mean, there are certain uses certainly where if we're going to zone something R1 or R2, of course I wouldn't need that, but for something like mixed-use, I guess, I just would prefer to have a reference, especially when you're in between a public and institution and then a, and then a, and then a residential. And so, that was one thing I just thought of, and then, let's see. Oh, you answered the other question about the comment. Oh, and then, if you go back two slides, or three, or four, or five, yes. The other thing was, when I was reading through the packet, it said adjacent to property that was incorporated by the city, so I just. So I just, I, I appreciate this visual here, because that was kind of my question, just to get a bigger picture, because I know we're kind of in that, like, no-man's land where we've got some annexed and some unannexed. So just if I, if I had, this is what I wanted to see, it would have been helpful to see that within this, just so I could get that picture. That was just, that was just all I wanted to say.
Anyone else? And all of those, those private individuals there, 25, 65, 77, they all received letters?
Within 200 feet?
Only, let's see.
Where the line is?
Oh, the line is. Oh, okay, so only 25, 65, okay.
Four properties, right.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, 1, 2, 3, 4.
Okay. Okay. All right, do we have anyone here for ownership?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. All right, at 7:30, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? At 7:31, we will close the public hearing. Do we have a motion, counsel?
I'll move that we approve ordinance number 20, or is this 2023-01? Is that because we're going to approve it on, on first? Okay, I'm sorry, sorry, I had to think out. I move that we approve ordinance number 2023-01 on first reading.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. If you'll raise your right hands if you are in agreement, thank you very much, it passes. All right, 6B.
Ordinance number 2023-02, an ordinance in Mini Chapter 60 of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Kerrville, Texas, by changing the zoning of an approximate 0.63 acre property known as 226 and 228 West Main, from a planned development zoning district PDD to a light commercial zoning district C2, providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
All right, Drew, what do you have for us?
The existing planned development district is limited to one use for a used vehicle car lot. The applicant has requested C2 to be consistent with both comprehensive plan policies and community commercial place type. And the adjacent zoning is C2, C1, and does back up to R1A. Obviously, all that is in existence, just getting the zoning cleaned up from the old planned development district. And Planning and Zoning Commission recommended for a case for approval with unanimous vote. The applicant is here, if you have any questions.
All right. Any questions for Drew before we have the applicant speak to us, if you would like? All right. Mr. Applicant?
Bruce Strick, 615 Earl Garrett. I represent the owners of this property. I just want, one, I'm just here generally for questions, but I want to point out one thing that was mentioned earlier in the meeting about C2 zoning. When we were looking at the Memorial Boulevard, junkyards and major automotive are not included in the C2 zone. So that example was actually a legal non-conforming use that was near that CUP that we looked at earlier on. This is not going to be a junkyard or major automotive, because that's not allowed in C2. This is, this is just going to be a general C2, this is our light commercial zone, like the pictures that Drew showed, but there's no junkyard or major automotive going to go here, because that's not allowed. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Anybody have a question for him? All right. Thank you, sir. And if this is a public hearing, we will open it at 7:34. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? All right, we will close the public hearing at 7:34. Do we have a motion? For this zoning? We, go ahead, Joe.
I was going to second.
You do it.
I move that we approve ordinance number 2023-02.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to 7A.
Ordinance number 2022-32, second reading, an ordinance annexing a tract of land to the corporate limits of the city of Kerrville, Texas, such property making up approximately 11.93 acres and generally located south of the intersection of State Highway 27 and Colvin Ranch Road, more commonly known as 5269 State Highway 27. Such property more specifically described in this ordinance and being located within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of and adjacent to the city limits, adopting a service agreement establishing the zoning for the annexed property as an industrial and manufacturing IM zoning district and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to point out one thing, this is the property that was in question for the subdivision waiver as well. As you've hopefully seen in your backup, there was a withdrawal of that waiver, worked with Public Works and Engineering, and have worked out the utility extensions as required by code. So they did withdraw that waiver.
Help staff, good job.
That's great.
Other than that, here for any questions.
All right, any questions, counsel?
Just to confirm, they, they will be doing everything that they didn't want to do, that they were requesting the waiver from?
It seemed like there were some misunderstandings from their side when they were here last. Is that?
We clarified what the requirements would be, specific to the sleeve for the sewer line. Obviously, a lift station could not be designed, as we started to get into during the last meeting. So with the carrier pipe for the sewer, the water line, and appropriate valves and hydrants and so on, they agreed. And they've submitted those plans. I believe the only thing pending is the drainage review for those plans to be approved, which was separate from the subdivision waiver in the first place, so.
Okay, good work.
Good job.
Good work. All right, counsel, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number 2022-32.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Thank you very much. And again, staff, good work, that's great. 7B.
Ordinance number 2022-30, second reading, an ordinance creating a new Chapter 80 short-term rental units, requiring permitting for short-term rental units containing a cumulative clause containing the savings and severability clause, providing for penalties not to exceed $2,000 ordered in publication, providing an effective date, and providing other matters relating to the subject.
All right, Garamo.
Good evening. So here to present, we're here for the second reading of the short-term rental ordinance, and I'm here to present some of the major changes that occurred during the timeframe from our last meeting to now. And so one of the first things I want to do is talk a little bit about what other cities are doing, some comparable ones, and this is one that kind of popped up on the radar. And I thought that this would be a good idea to show you how very similar this path has gone from like the city of Plano, using the city of Plano as an example. As you can see, they hire a third-party agency to collect data for them, we've done that as well, conduct town hall meetings, we've conducted town hall meetings, they updated their zoning ordinance, we've done that, and ultimately, they are in the process of trying to create a registration program, and we're in the midst of that, and that's the whole reason for tonight and the ordinance that's before you. Just historical pieces, this item, as was discussed earlier or mentioned earlier, that's been well over a year that we've been through this process. It's been to our code review committee, which they recommended some zoning changes. Eventually ended up in a town hall meeting, and eventually it ended up changing the zoning code with zoning updates. And then eventually, we got to a short-term rental committee that actually produced the ordinance that you're seeing before you today with some minor changes that we're seeing today. So just kind of want to give you that historical and go into the changes that we're going to talk about today. So one of the biggest changes is we listened to counsel's recommendations to create a new chapter, and we've done that. Originally, we were going to place it in Chapter 30, Businesses, and the reason we felt that was fit in that art, or in that chapter is because of Article 1 and Article 5, which talk about group homes, hotels, and ends, and that was the reason why, but after counsel's recommendation, we did create a new chapter, and the chapter is now going to be Chapter 80, that's going to be solely dedicated to short-term rentals. We did remove some where-ases, and that again, that was a recommendation by counsel, and identified some areas for improvement, and so we removed those items, which talked about a little bit negativity impacting the residential character, and the second where-ase talked about the shortage of available local housing. So we removed those from the ordinance itself as identified. The next thing that we talked about is the old definition of the short-term rental, that we felt that it was necessary to upgrade it and change it, and so I'll just read to you what the old definition was, so that when you can, when we look at the new definition, you have a better understanding of why. So the old definition says, "Short-term rental unit means a facility used for the purpose of providing short-term lodging for compensation, which may also be occupied concurrently as the residence of, for the owner, operator, or manager of the property, or providing separate lodging units such as cabins, guest homes, or similar residential-scale structures, but in any instance, may not lodge more than 10 occupants." The new definition states, "Short-term rental unit means a facility used for the purpose for providing short-term lodging for compensation, i.e. less than 30 days, which may also be occupied concurrently as the residence of the owner, operator, or manager of the property, or providing separate lodging units such as cabins, guest homes, or similar residential-scale structures." Two big things I want to point out is the short-term lodging for compensation, less than 30 days, we want to make that clear, so it stood out. And then, and then the one thing you'll notice also here, it doesn't mention the occupancy piece, which I will touch on here in my next few slides as to why we did that. But one of the things that we are asked, we did ask to put into the ordinance that wasn't in there originally, was a sketch of the floor plan, which identifies the sleeping areas, the maximum number of guests, the evacuation routes, and location of fire extinguishers. The reason why we're doing that is because after meeting with staff and discussing this with multiple cities of what they're doing, we felt that, what are we trying to solve here? What we're trying to make sure is trying to ensure that the safety, the welfare, and the health of those occupants is always at the forefront. And so in order to, as a compromise in regards to not listing out the occupancy number, we said, if we could have this piece, because ultimately, when a, an occupant comes in and rents one of those short-term rentals, they can see that layout and see, okay, here's my egress, here's my points of where I can exit the building, here's where the fire hydrants is, or not fire hydrant, but the, the fire extinguisher is. It gives them an opportunity to understand where they're at in the building, how to exit the building in case of an emergency. That's ultimately our goal, that's what we want to ensure. And so this was an area, this was a section that we wanted to include. The next section is a little bit change into the occupancy portion, and as you read this, it's, it's a lot of words, but what it's trying to say is that we want to have that flexibility based on our individual interactions with the owner of the property. Ideally, we want to stay within the IRC, which is the International Residential Code, because that gives us a lot more flexibility on the home, and it doesn't necessarily put a cap on the, on the occupancy, but it gives us some flexibility. And if necessary, depending on the home, if let's say they have a 20-bedroom home and they want to use the house as a short-term rental, then the question comes in, no, is that really a short-term rental, or is it a bed and breakfast? So it gives us some flexibility, and then plus the, we've heard through the grapevine, I don't know what's going to come out of the legislature, but there's some talk that the legislature is going to pick this up as an item. I don't know yet, we, we haven't heard, it's just something that's kind of been out in the grapevine. But in the end, it talks about the, giving the, the, the ability for us to talk with the homeowner and convey what our thoughts are and give recommendations, but also give them flexibility. So we're trying to work with the homeowner and give them the flexibility to do what they need to do, and give us the flexibility to provide input into how they run their organization, their, their short-term rental, but without being heavy-handed and saying, you need to have X amount of people. Next thing I quickly wanted to talk about, which is a little bit later down in the, your, your agenda item, but it's the fee schedule. I want to take this opportunity to talk about it now, since we are talking about short-term rentals. So we are recommend, making a recommendation to amend the fee schedule to adopt a 100 initial registration fee, a $50 renewal registration fee. Those are fees that were presented to the short-term rental committee, and they recommended and, and agreed that that was reasonable. And so how we came about that calculation is that I basically took three major categories, took personal cost, material cost, and equipment cost, and basically said, okay, what are my individual costs for those specific items, or those specific categories? I took into consideration the code enforcement manager, took into considerations my office supplies, the phone services, the vehicles, because sometimes we may have to drive out there, I don't know, but we'll learn that as we go through this whole process, and of course, we can amend this at any time throughout the budgeting process as well. And so based on that information, we were able to calculate a $100 initial registration fee and a $50 renewal fee. So that was the recommendation, and I can provide more detail later on if necessary. Additionally, one of the two things that we were working on top of this was working with my government online. So we're about 90% complete with MGO. The application portion has been completed, but there are some minor glitches, so we're trying to work with them to get those fixed. And on the backend portal, which is what, in this case, Donna would look at to document and everything, it's about 90% completed as well, there's some minor glitches in it as well, but for the most part, it's, it's done, and it should be ready by the end of this month and ready to be open for all the short-term rental owners by the first, if not earlier than that. And we'll make an announcement on that. The next thing is Civic Plus, the city app. The city app is something that we've, that we've had for a while. It can be downloaded from the Apple Store or the Android equivalent, and this app now has an ability to make a complaint about a short-term rental. So when you open the app, if you go to the section that says, "Report an Issue," under "Report an Issue," there is an icon that says, "Short-term Rental Complaint." So an individual can submit a complaint through our city app. That complaint will then be moved over to Development Services. Development Services will pick it up and will conduct the investigation of that complaint to see if it's warranted or not, and make contact with the short-term rental owner as well, if necessary. Questions?
Is it under code enforcement?
No, if you, if you look under where it says, "Report an Issue," oops.
Oh, I see it.
So if you look, when you look at your app.
Oh, it's the first one.
Yeah, if you look at the very top, it says, "Report an Issue," and then there's one right there that says, "Short-term Rental Complaint," and then it just kind of walks you through individually, and it actually allows you, as you go, as you go through the process, it actually put a map up that you can identify the location of that home, that home as well.
And when do you think it will be up and running and, and all?
The short-term complaint, it's already up and running.
Okay.
MGO, we're hoping will be ready before, or just after Christmas.
Oh, okay.
So if you, and when you go to put it in there, it brings up your current location as well? There's not really loud party, I'm going to back out of that. Had to put in a complaint violation.
We'll have Donna look at it.
I didn't submit.
All right, counsel, any questions for Garamo? Anything else that we need to talk about?
So since you brought it up, the, the fees, if you have that later on, that's fine, but I know some of us did ask for an analysis and why those fees were going to be at that amount, and I know the committee, when we were looking at it, also asked for some information. I've yet to date received anything about that, so.
Right, and if you want, we can update, send that to you as well, after this meeting. The reason we didn't do it last time is because we're going to get it, we're going to discuss it in the short-term rental committee, and then after that, we did. So, but I could definitely provide that information.
I was hoping that I could get that before we looked at the fee schedule, because it'll be too late after we approve it. Another thing is on the app that you have to report an issue, there are selections that, it says, "What best describes the issue you're reporting," and then you have to tap to select one of them. There's a general noise issues, loud parties, but we haven't issued and put in place a noise ordinance.
There's one in state law that we do enforce.
That we do enforce?
Mm-hmm. Periodical, I mean, we, we use it if we get a complaint about loud noise, we remind people that there's a state law.
Excuse me.
Well, we'll have, let you talk just a minute. Okay, any, anyone else, counsel, that would, any other questions?
Yeah, Garamo, I have a letter here from, from somebody, I'm assuming she's an STR owner, and she wants the, she would like to see the complaint section removed from MGO, and she says, "It seems like an invitation for complaints that may not be warranted." Can you speak to that just a little bit?
From MGO or the app?
Either.
The app, probably.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, this is something that was mentioned previously, that we wanted a way for citizens to give input, but also provide a way to allow citizens to complain about short-term rentals, and so this is one way of doing that, to give the people access to it.
Yeah, we talked, and we talked a lot about, there were issues. Yeah, we talked, and we talked a lot about, there were issues brought up about, about whether it was legal, or, or if, to, for that information to be provided so that a neighbor could contact directly to the short-term rental, and that obviously to me is kind of not public information, I guess I would say, that, so, then your general public doesn't know if it's like a trash issue, they're not going to call the police, or if it's, you know, something that's not a police level, and if it's not a time when the city is open or just, I mean, people, I think, need a way to, you know, access information. So I, I was, I think I even brought it up, that it would be an easy way to add a reporting feature, so. And I would say probably from my, my point of view, if it does become something that is abused, then it can certainly be taken away at such time that it feels abusive and not warranted.
Absolutely.
Do you have a way of tracking multiple complaints?
Well, it creates a database. Yeah, the system does create a database for us, and so, and then what, what will end up happening is, we get the complaint, and then Donna will create a code enforcement case in MGO, and then we can track it that way as well. Doesn't mean when she puts it in a code compliant, the MGO has a code enforcement case, doesn't mean it's going anywhere but just an investigation, or just a communication back to the short-term rental owner that says, hey, you may have had some loud music, can you address it for the next time? It might be as simple as that.
Yeah, I just want to know how to respond to her, you know, what the, what the argument is.
If you could send me the state law, I'd appreciate that too, so I can have that as reference. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions, counsel?
And Mayor, we do have two citizen speakers Sunday.
Okay, that, and this will be the time for that, so.
I would like to thank you all for your very diligent, year-long, plus, work in listening to not only all of the committee input and minding through all of that, but then further changes coming forward from counsel at the last meeting. I think, I think everything, unless I'm missing something, I think everything was heard loud and clear, and is a reflection of, of, of a long process, a lot of diligence by the city, so thank you.
All right, our first speaker.
Karen.
Agreed, I'm very thankful for the staff, they are pretty classy, in my opinion. They're, hang on, because you're almost here, you're almost done with short-term rentals. I do have a couple of things. So, we have one whereas statement, that's page one, second to the whereas, second to the last whereas statement, it wasn't correct as far as what the committee had come up with. Now you, you have to remember that we were not allowed to touch the whereas statements, right, as the committee. And so it was an understanding that the staff would take it back home and, and revise it, hopefully not home, back to work, and revise it according to what we came up with in the committee. But this one wasn't revised. It's, we as a committee came up with and voted on what would constitute a suspension or a revocation in the permit. The word suspended, so in this, in this last whereas statement, second to the last one, it says the, the words suspended or revoked in the event of repeated nuisance violations. Those wouldn't be correct as far as what we all voted on. We came up with and voted on wording that said that there were only two reasons for revocation or suspension of a permit, is if the police or fire chief declared an unsafe situation, or the owner knowingly lied on an application. So it should read, suspended or revoked in the event of fire or police chief declaring unsafe condition. I do appreciate the occupancy limit changes, although it's very, very hard to read. I had to ask Garry Mo, and I'll have, if I have time, I'm going to tell you my hours-long dive into that one. I would like to say with the, the complaint section of the, of the thing, I feel like as sort of the, one of the leaders of the STR group, we are in awe of this one, because you have no other, no other specific complaint section for, for someone else. So, so like, if we could do it for also for long-term rentals, if, if there is a pull-down menu that says, "Short-term Rental," and then it has a list of things that you can complain about, I say, then you need to have one for long-term rentals, list of things that you can complain about, have one for owners, list of things you can complain about. You can't set us apart. It, it can just be home, and that's fine. So if it's residential complaints, do residential complaints, the list of things you can complain about. Because what you're doing is saying, here's short-term rentals, everybody, including the comment we just heard, and let me quote it, by the lady who promised behind me to have the police on speed dial before there were any problems with her just announced approval of their, of their CUP. So, no, no offense, but if this lady is going to go ahead and have the police on speed dial, you can already see the problem with that. And I just feel like it's a, just a gross misrepresentation of what should be happening there. And if I have a little bit of time, I'm going to go back to the occupancy, which I really do appreciate the work that they put into this. It's very hard, so, so in our, in our, on page four, which is number five, we're referred to section eighty-dash-eleven for occupancy limits. And then when you go to section eighty-dash-eleven, which is seven D, we're referred to the City Code of Ordinances in chapter twenty-six. When you get to chapter twenty-six in the City Code, we're referred to the twenty-eighteen version of the IBC. And when you get to the twenty-eighteen version of the IBC, it gives you the twenty-eighteen version of the International Residential Code. So then, those two keep going back and forth until you find-
[beep].
Okay.
I get your point, I get your statement.
You got the point? I have, I have a better, I have a better thing that you should, you should think about, it's-
But Robin, we, we've got to be fair to everybody, thank you.
Our second speaker?
Yes. Nikki Keynes, I live in the city, I'm here to speak for the over three hundred-plus homeowners who wrote to you, spoke before the council, and signed a petition asking you to restrict STRs as businesses in our neighborhood. It was one of our priorities, and we thank the majority of the council for approving that zoning ordinance. But I'm here to say that I need some clarification, as well as everyone else here, because the STR seem to have been removed from the chapter thirty business code, and they are under a new chapter eighty, which seems like a preferential status. I look at STRs, and as a business, they are in business to make money, that's what a business does. Most of them don't run their businesses out of their home, their STRs are their businesses. They have pled their case before you in these chambers, that any curtailment would ruin their business or take away their livelihood. Many have filed or registered as an LLC, protecting themselves personally from any liability, and others are listed as such-and-such cottage, such-and-such bungalow, et cetera. The city counts, the city chamber of commerce promotes them. The city collects hot taxes, which, under the Texas State Code, that makes them a hotel, that's a business. Some hire and/or pay property managers, cleaning services, maybe even family members, and includes their supplies. Do they file ten ninety-nines for these people, and then use them as a tax deduction? I assume that the revenue they make is reported for federal taxation purposes, but do they file as a homeowner or as a business? As far as I'm concerned, these are all armar, all mark, all earmarks of a business. I believe I remember hearing the city attorney, Mr. Hayes, on several occasions recommending to leave them under chapter thirty as a business. Our coalition members, petition signers, and thousands of homeowners across the city would like clarification, as, although you say you cannot and legally cannot enforce our HOA docs, deeds, covenants, and restrictions, but if this new chapter eighty removes them as a business, you're now cutting our legs out from underneath us. I would act, I ask you to please clarify with your vote tonight, that you are not taking that protection away from us, and that you are not giving STR owners a preferred or preferential status. They promote themselves, most of them, on social media for money. That, to me, is the essence of a business. Please reconsider this status and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of the citizen speakers.
Okay, thank you. All right, counsel.
One of the, both speakers made good points, I want to hit them, one from each. One is about the complaint system, I was going to bring this up after we listened to them, she said it anyways. I do have a concern with pointing out and putting specific complaint system in place for short-term rentals only. I think, do we, we probably already have a, a system to do that for residential, like regular? If not, maybe we should create one and do it across the board throughout the whole city, and make it a part of code enforcement. My recommendation tonight would be to approving that as part of this, so I know that it would just be a recommendation from council, that they just look at that since it was presented to us tonight, and, and change that from a specific to short-term rentals to overall residential, so it's fair treatment to everybody in the community.
Another topic for another time.
Correct, well, he brought it up, I didn't, so.
May I, may I respond quickly? If you scroll down, you can see where it says, "Yard brush and waste not serviced," there's potholes, there's street sweeping, tree trimming, traffic, public works. There's more items in here that allow you to, to, to address a lot of the residential concerns as well.
Correct, I just don't think short-term rentals should be put in a separate category to do those. Second would be the, again, the noise ordinance, or the noise law that we have in state law. I just, I would like us to make sure that we review that, and that what we're referring to is what we actually think it is. In the short period of time that I had to research that, it's my understanding so far, that that unreasonable noise law under the Texas Penal Code is only for those who are not, who do not have the right to occupy that residence. So if I go out near or on a residential property, and I'm making a lot of noise, excessive noise, according to that law, because I don't have the right to occupy that property or that residence, that would be illegal. But if those who are staying there at that short-term rental legally have the right to occupy that because of their short-term rental agreement, and they make loud noise according to state law, that doesn't seem to be a problem. So I just want to make sure if we're following that, that's what it actually is. If not, we've talked about this on the committee before, and I think on city council, maybe we look at a noise ordinance, maybe we look at strengthening our nuisance ordinance overall throughout the whole city, and not just specific to short-term rentals. Lastly, on the covenants for short-term rentals, Mrs. Keynes, I'll briefly address that. We removed it at our last, so I don't know, you probably weren't here at the last meeting, I think you said that at the very beginning, so that's probably why there's some confusion. We had a thorough discussion about that on city council, and we decided to remove it from the business chapter. There's been, you know, cases made both ways, whether it's residential or business, we decided just take it away from both and make it its own chapter. If there's a concern about whether it's taking the rights away from homeowners associations or property owner associations, because we're taking it out of a business category, I believe they could easily adjust their covenants to say that none of the properties there could be used for less than thirty days, if that's what they wanted to do, instead of just keeping it as a business, so that's it.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Yeah? All right, we have what is before us, an ordinance on the second reading.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number twenty-twenty-two-dash-three on the second reading.
Okay.
And we have a second? All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. All right. Thank you to all. This has been a yeoman's job, you guys have done, both the committee and staff, and thank you, thank you, thank you. So, the other thing I think it's important to mention is that we'll review this in a year. And so at that time then, if there's some things that need adjusting due to whatever's happened in that year, we'll have the opportunity to do that. So we need to keep that in mind. All right, we are ready for seven C.
Ordinance number twenty-twenty-two-dash-thirty-three, second reading, and ordinance submitting chapter one-zero-two, Traffic and Vehicles, section one-zero-two-dash-one, definitions of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Purple, Texas, by revising the definitions of excessive or unusual noise and noise makers in their entirety, containing a savings and severability clause, providing an effective date, ordering publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject. There are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right.
Mayor, this is the second reading, and there's been no changes since the first reading.
All right, okay. All right, any, any questions, counsel, anything you need clarified before we vote? Do we have a, a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number twenty-twenty-two-dash-thirty-three.
Second. Second, and all in favor, raise your right hand, and it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to eight A, please.
Construction agreement with D and D Contractors, Inc., for the Westminster Street Reconstruction Project, in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and forty-six thousand one hundred and one million.
One million.
Eight hundred and forty-six thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty cents. And it looks like there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. I know this has been long-awaited, you know, we've talked about this various instances. We did get the, the Water Development Board approval for the other projects, so we, we let the, the four projects at the same time, got those bids back in November. We brought one before you already, this one will be the second, we'll have a couple later on in, in January meetings. This is, again, just continuation of our, our street bonds, you know, the nineteen funding for reconstruction. This is a higher priority for us, but we don't really have the funding mechanisms or the in-house staff to, to go through a lot of this. Again, the, just to give a, a general idea of where this is, it's kind of the east-central, I guess, if you want to look at it, from First to Lang, nearest Renter Campus. What we will do is the entirety, it's not going to be a section, it's not going to be half here, half there, it's going to be the entirety of Westminster, very heavily traveled. And, and it's also going to hopefully fix some of this, you know, not hopefully, but we will. A lot of this has not been touched in years, and I, I don't recall when I took this one, I, I was surprised that I actually found rain, found it, I remembered going there, so it's like, you know, I want to show you. This is, is one of the biggest problems that we have on, on our streets. When water stands, it deteriorates the integrity of that street. So what we're going to do is come in, give them a nice, nice section, we're going to, you know, impose a little bit of a crown, get the drainage off, and, and into the gutters, and into our storm system. That's just a, a simple plan view of, of what we do. The one thing I do also want to highlight here is, I mentioned a heavily trafficked area, this is also heavily trafficked as far as pedestrians, so we're proposing five-foot sidewalks on both sides throughout this neighborhood, because it's a good connection piece, singing winds, University downtown. With that said, the funding mechanism is the remaining twenty-nineteen bonds, so we've, we've done the one and two, this is kind of the third phase, if you will, of, of those bond allocations, and then the overage will be covered by our annual street maintenance. So tonight, we're just asking you to approve the construction contract.
Well, just as a reminder, we had a citizen talk to us a little bit about some confusion over some of the earlier repairs that were being made, and some communication issues with them being told or thinking somehow that the patchwork was the reconstruction.
Yes, the MS gas?
Yes, when those repairs were, when those were being made, so what is the process for notifying the owners of properties on that street, since it is such a long street, and since there was some confusion-
Right.
-in the past?
So, our typical standard for construction activities is, I come before you tonight, you authorize the, the contract, I issue a notice of award to that contractor, they give us insurance, insurance, all that stuff, I present EA with a signed contract that both he and Mr. Hayes will execute, and then we schedule a pre-construction meeting with engineering staff, public works, anybody else that, that's affected with that contract- anybody else that's affected with that contractor. And one of the requirements that we have is setting up that schedule. That schedule is pertinent because that's when we go out and notify door-to-door of, hey, this is.
So who's notifying? Is it city staff or is it the contractor?
Both. The contractors do, but we like to have the city staff involvement. Hey, I'm the inspector, here's my card, contact me if you need something. I don't want them to come to you or to city admin. You know, a lot of it's just informative that we handle in-house, and it's just standard procedure for us to go out and issue, basically it's a little one-page of, hey, this is like in this instance.
So it's written, it'll be written?
Yes, ma'am.
Something written will be added to them.
So you leave it indoors, you leave it in mailboxes?
We hope to contact them while they're there. But yes, ultimately, it's on the door. You know, we understand that a lot of people don't necessarily use the front door, so we try to, try to, you know, visualize where that traffic goes in. We don't want to trespass on their property and just, you know, go hang it in the kitchen kind of thing. But we want to, we want to make sure that they're aware of what we're doing. So, and then, you know, we also try to get with Cunha's and issue a public notice so that even, especially in this one, anybody traveling on Westminster is going to be impacted. So what we will also do, more than likely, is notify Travis. Because Travis is going to kind of be that cut-through now. Westminster's going to have the impact, they're going to find another route. So we kind of, we look at holistic approach of who might be affected, not just those immediate residents.
Do we have any kind of timeframe for completion of this project? Because that's the questions we're going to get.
Right. So notice of proceed would be about January?
Yeah, when are you going to start?
Do I?
When are you going to start, now when are you going to finish?
Yeah, notice of proceed is hopeful for January. We'll get all the contract stuff, that's a nice part about the holidays right now. We're estimating about eight to 10 months. So basically, the end of paving season is where we're looking to actually have that street paved.
Okay. Awesome, thank you.
Can you clarify the total amount that we're spending on this? Looking at the summary statement on the agenda bill, and one of the last statements says that you're recommending that we award the base bid with the alternate bid. Is that the case still?
Yes, so what the alternate bid is, it's not an entirely separate, it's essentially changing the street section. We had a base bid of two inches of D, six inches of B, six inches of flex. The alternate is two inches, three inches, and 10 inches. So the bigger flex is a cheaper option. I talked with Stuart, and, you know, we're still getting a more than adequate road section. So for us, it was, you know, let's utilize the dollars elsewhere. We're getting more than what we need through this to handle the amount of regular traffic, the school buses, the trash trucks and everything. So what it did is it extracted the original section, the base bid section, and added in the other section components. That's all, a lot of times, it's just one or two lineups.
Want to have a field trip again, too.
So it's more of a deduct alternate than?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Can we have a field trip again?
Of course. Bring yourselves. We need a mill.
We have an idea of how old this street is, I mean, 60, 50?
I was born on Westminster.
I do not.
So 20.
Yeah, 20.
I will say, it's not one of the oldest that we've done.
Okay.
Because there was a quarry in this area years ago. I don't know the timeline on that. Some of our streets that we have that we've done previously kind of predate that quarry. So, but it is old.
All right. Staff, are we, staff, I'm sorry, council, are we ready to vote this in? Well, this will be a great Christmas present for the people on Westminster.
I move to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute a construction contract with D and D Contractors, Inc. for Westminster Street Reconstruction Project.
Second.
Second, all right. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous, yay. All right, what's next, Kyle, with our next one? 8B.
Authorization to negotiate a design bill contract for the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Okay, Kyle?
All right, this one, I have Joel Kokomore with Freezzen Nichols here for assistance because I am still learning this design build process. We've gone through this thing through the summer and fall, getting the RFQ. You know, this is an active action item in the comp plan. We've done the development and management agreement with Heritage Center. Actually, here's the timeline. So we've issued the RFQs, got the shortlist, we only received five statement of qualifications, we moved everybody forward. With those, we got the proposals from those five, the selection committee ranked them. We're here before you tonight to award the contract to the highest-ranked, best value design build team. So it's not a construction contract like we just had, it's not a professional service, it's a combination of everything to help expedite that. Just a quick timeline, what we're looking at is basically negotiations on that, on finalizing that contract would occur this month with the hope of January, we're proceeding, and then early '24, we would have that ready for the Heritage Center to move in. Again, just a quick overview of what the design build process is, we're just doing one contract for that. Here's the evaluation criteria. You know, it was one of those that we had to look at, what their project approach was. Not just qualifications, we know everybody's qualified, they can do this work. What's your approach to the project, the way we've laid it out? You know, and what's going to be, in the committee's mind, the best value for us to utilize that and get the Heritage Center functional? So again, pricing was a component of it, the costing methodology, you know, there's a pre-construction phase, reconstruction phase, Joel can allude to the more specifics of that. The committee went through and evaluated everything. And so what we're here tonight, and if you have specific questions, let us know, but what we're here tonight is to, for council direction, to staff to negotiate and finalize a contract with the design build team that was determined to be the highest-ranked proposer for the Heritage Center project and award a contract with a construction cost limitation of 3.25 million. So, and that would be to Marksmen General Contractors.
Is Freezzen Nichols our owner's rep?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, for this one and the public safety. You'll see this with public safety as well.
Just helping guide us through the process.
And they were part of this selection?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Joel has been a great asset to have on this because it's a lot to learn.
So everyone has scoped out their project to the tune of 3.25 million?
Yes, ma'am. That was in the RFQ, that was in the RFP, and that is the defined budget cost limitation.
We find that they find, that that's obviously within the reasonable scope of?
Right, and we had, you know, a lot of this, and Joel can allude to more, they're going to design us the project for what we want to the tune of 3.25 million. That's going to cover their schematic component of it to bring forth to the committee, that's going to have the design component of it, and then that's going to have the construction fees and their general conditions like overhead. That's all summed up in 3.25 million, can you do this project?
Remind me about the committee, the selection, the selection committee, is it's made up of Freezzen Nichols, obviously? Are you independently doing that or in collaboration with staff?
So it's Freezzen Nichols, staff, Heritage Center, and CBB.
CBB.
Yes.
And what city turn?
Convention and Visitors.
Convention, yes.
Okay.
So there's designated for?
Yes, ma'am. And that will be different for public safety, that's just for this one.
I do want to say thank you to the city staff for including Angela Kennedy, who's the new executive director of the Heritage Center, on the selection committee.
Oh, okay.
And I also want to thank Dr. Bill Rector, who has led this thing since it was just him and me talking about it at coffee window.
Great.
So thank you, Bill.
This is great.
All right.
Do you have any questions for myself or for Joel?
Anything we want to ask Joel? He has come all this way.
Happy to help.
Anything you would like to?
Just from San Antonio.
Okay. Anything you'd like to share with us?
I can't, I can't really add anything that Kyle didn't say there, I just really appreciate of the selection committee, they did a great job. We worked diligently through the Thanksgiving holiday to make sure that we stayed on schedule. As your owner's advisor and your DB advisor, we're checking all the boxes, per se. And we've arrived at a milestone, so this is pretty exciting because we're going to be moving from the, you know, pending we can get this contract negotiated sometime in January, we'll be moving from the procurement phase to the pre-construction phase. And that's where the design efforts really start to take place. So this is, this is a pretty exciting milestone. We had, we had a great response from the responders, they made it a very difficult decision, but ultimately, we presented you with the best response for this project.
So what is this anticipated notice to proceed? Is that when you tell the person that has, the group that has been selected, that they are selected and they are to proceed?
Marksmen, obviously, will be aware tonight because their name was said just a few minutes ago. They can expect a contract, and then pending the negotiations and execution of that contract in January, they will start the design effort.
They will start the design.
Correct.
And this is a, this is a group, two entities, that have worked together before on something like this?
The marksmen contractors has put together a team that they are very familiar with, and they have a substantial amount of design build experience. That was, that was part of the vetting process, so we're confident in that.
Okay. All right, council, any other comments or questions? Uh-uh. I think this is just marvelous.
Mayor, I have a motion if that would help.
That's right, we had a, you gave us a new motion.
I have it written down if that helps because there is some particular.
Yes.
I'd like to make that motion.
Yeah, let's let Joe do that.
I would like to move that we direct staff to negotiate a contract with a design build team that was determined to be the highest-ranked proposer for the HHHC project and award a contract with construction cost limitation of 3.25 million dollars to Marksmen General Contractors.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Wonderful, wonderful.
Thank you for your work, Dr. Director.
Joe, thank you for.
Thank you.
Dr. Rector.
And Dr. Rector.
We'll have champagne afterwards, right? All right.
Thank you, mayor, thank you, council.
Thank you, thanks for coming. All right, another monumental.
Before you start.
Yes.
Mayor and council, I have filed paperwork to make clear my conflict of interest on 8C, and I will not be participating in the discussion or vote because my family owns property upon along the proposed route.
Okay.
I'll be outside.
Don't leave. Don't run away. Okay. Can you get up? All right, 8C. Shelley?
Project funding agreement. Excuse me, mayor, why is he excusing himself of putting here?
Oh, because his family has property along the river where this river trail might go.
Okay, thank you.
Conflict of interest.
Project funding agreement between the City of Carroll, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation and the City of Carroll, Texas for the development and construction of an extension to the city's river trail from the Tranquility Island Bridge to the scenic downtown overlook pavilion. And we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. As always, we'd like to start with the Carroll 2050 support, the down, the river trail in general has heavy support in Carroll 2050. Across a couple of slides, it's included in the Parks Master Plan as you are well aware and is the number one priority extension identified in the Parks Master Plan River Trail section. And also included in the July 2019 adopted River Trail Master Plan is the segment extension in blue. A quick history on funding between, for the River Trail, this is a project that's been funded between a joint partnership between the EIC and the city council. With the exception of the 2002 bond for 500,000, the EIC has funded the majority or the remainder of the trail. This is the funding application that you authorized staff to submit to the EIC back in September and to pursue a funding agreement for this purpose. The major history and timeline regarding the River Trail downtown extension, June 2018, Carroll 2050 was adopted with strong support of the River Trail. July 2019, the Carroll River Trail Master Plan was adopted, includes downtown extension. May 2021, EIC funded a concept study completed by Hewitt Engineering for Phase 1 and 2. In April 2022, it's included in the Parks Master Plan update that was adopted with the number one priority for the trail extension. So again, this is the extension that we're discussing tonight. This is Phase 1 of 2. This would be picking up from Tranquility Island Library ramp area and going to below the scenic overlook boardwalk pavilion in Luis Hayes Park. And that would be about 1,600 linear feet and would also include the environmental studies for Phase 2 as well, which would pick up from that section at Luis Hayes Park and go to G Street. So the approval timeline here, we have, again, I mentioned in September, we received council authorization to approach the EIC. We approached the EIC in September, we presented the funding agreement in October and held a public hearing. The EIC considered it in November, and at their December 13th, I'm sorry, November 14th meeting, the EIC approved the funding agreement, and it is on your agenda tonight for final consideration and approval. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, questions for Ashley?
You referred to the plan that you said, I was looking where it gave the priority, the list of priorities, and that this was the number one.
Sure.
I was trying to find that in that plan.
Right here, in the Parks Master Plan, it's the number one priority.
Do you have an excerpt or something to refer to the plan? Because I was looking through that earlier throughout the weeks, and then I looked at it again today, and I couldn't find the list of priorities in that.
The list of priorities for the trail?
Right, to show that it was number one.
This is the, this is the list from the master plan. The six trail items for the priority for the trail section.
Okay, but we don't have like an excerpt of what page I can find that on?
I do not know the page number out of the master plan off the top of my head, but I can certainly get that to you.
That's what I was looking for.
The page number?
Yes, that's what I've been looking for, because I've heard many times that it's the number one priority that's listed in the new master plan that we updated, right? Just not too long ago. And so I was looking through that plan, trying to find the list of priorities, and I couldn't find it.
Sure, I will pull that page number and provide it to you.
All right, if we have no more questions for Ashley, who is our speaker? Shelley?
George Broody.
George Broody, 1616 Glen Road. So I'm going to kind of reiterate what I was heard at, said at EIC's meeting, which is kind of, this stretch of planned River Trail is probably the least bang for our buck that we've had and possibly that we will have. The, this proposal listed as being a little over a million dollars, basically a million dollars. The details of it show about 1,500 linear feet. You divide that out, it's about 650 to 700 dollars a foot. The rest of the River Trail, the six miles, the rest of it, if we were to have done it at that rate, it would have cost us 21 million dollars to build. It didn't cost us that, probably, I don't even know, but last I heard it was like around eight or nine. Just say that to say the bang for the buck isn't really there. The other aspect of it is, one of the main things in the 2050 plan regarding the River Trail was safe crossings of the river. We already have the trail on the south side, so the idea was to get a safe crossing. This trail, we actually already have trail running along Water Street, it's called the sidewalk on Water Street. If we could just connect up to the sidewalk, we'd get a little more bang for our buck. Another person at EIC mentioned, you know, they use the River Trail, as do I and as do a lot of people. We're not going on the River Trail to go shopping downtown, we're going on the River Trail to run the length of it. It is nice to be able to connect up and do things, but this, again, it's, it's a lot more expensive. You'll get more River Trail if you go a different way. And this is already traveled, it's also pigeonholing you. This is 1 million. The next section that you're talking about to take you to G Street is, they originally proposed it, I think he threw out a number of about 2 or 3 million dollars to do that stretch. Again, that's 3 to 4 million dollars for one little stretch that's arguably not doing anything for even the businesses that are down there, but certainly not for the River Trail itself. I travel the River Trail. To connect up to this section, I believe, I could be wrong, I don't know because I haven't seen the trail where it's going to go, but if we're supposed to connect up with that switchback that's behind the library, has anybody seen that? The ADA compliant switchback, there are seven back and forth. I don't know anybody that's going to push a wheelchair up that. I'm not going to ride my bike up that. I'll go all the way down to G Street and ride across there. So there's easier ways to get us across to the business side of downtown, and I would just, I would encourage you to not move forward with this one until you've at least And I would just, I would encourage you to not move forward with this one until you've at least discussed the next item on your agenda because it seems like more bang for your buck on trail. Thank you.
Yes, let's see. Is there anyone else who wishes to?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, counsel, comments?
I watched the EIC meetings, both of them that they had. The reason they had two meetings is because they had reservations. The first one tabled to their second meeting and I think it passed a vote of what, four to?
Four to.
Two, four to, right?
Okay.
I agree with the reservations and concerns that are posed by members of the EIC and citizens specific to it being, one, a little bit redundant to have it right there. When you look at the amount of trail that we're getting for the amount of money that we would be spending there, I think it could be better used elsewhere. I also don't want us just to try to rush to do this just because we feel like we may need to do something. I think I was also going to suggest that we look at the next one because several citizens and even members of the EIC were suggesting, let's look at going west. I mean, we could go east too because we have more to do on that side. We have a lot right there in the center area near downtown. I think if we want, really want to do that, that's something we could finish off with maybe the River Trail when we're done with it. Another point that I'd like to make, something for counsel to consider, is that when the master plan was originally created in 2019 and we updated it due to the discussions that we were having at the time and the 2050 plan that was adopted, this section that we're discussing was not in it. It wasn't until around months later, nine months later, probably almost a year, where it was added. And so I would just like for us to look at, let's look at the original plan that was updated that we put together and let's see if there's anything else there before we made all the amendments and added this section to it. Let's take a look back and take a step back and see if there's something else we could do. I would, I have, still have reservations and concerns about doing this and I would like to see us go west or east somewhere else.
So, are you, are you finished?
Yeah.
So I'm not following the end of what Councilmember Garcia said about the update. I asked in EIC as an E, I'll, I'll, if you want to clarify after, that's.
No, no, absolutely, go ahead.
I asked in EIC as an EIC member and I was, I was certainly on the fence about doing this. Clarified things to me was that we have a plan to work and it's the citizen's plan. I, you can hear from every single person about where they want the trail to go. I've heard all kinds of great ideas and every one of them makes me want to stop and think. That is a good possibility. So I kind of got logged down in all of these other ideas that maybe this one was better. And how am I going to figure out which one is the best way to go and what to do? And the answer is right in front of me and it's a master plan that was developed with citizen input. And I don't think as, as a person, as a single person, that I can say that my particular idea is better than a collective effort that is created within a plan. And so that is where I came to my level of comfort with this. I don't want to sit here as one person and making a decision for an entire city that is in contradiction to what a master plan has told me that citizen input has directed us to do. So that is kind of where I made the decision that I was going to sit for this as a member of EIC. And also, I will say, we don't know what's going to happen, the next item on moving west, which was again, something I feel strongly about doing. But there's going to be a lot of impetus to that. So the expense to that and the expense to every piece of the River Trail is very unique as far as easement acquisition, engineering, design and development. It just is. So it's not apples to apples. You know, we want to go certain places and all those places present challenges and opportunities. But I'm just going to personally make my decision based on, on the master plan.
Well, and to add on to what you were saying, Kim, there's also the issue of private property and easements and, and being able to navigate that. And that's a, that's a, an unknown.
That's right.
So. Well, and I just personally, I think that doing our downtown is, in that area is vitally important. I think that there are things that will come from this that we don't yet know. It's just like with the River Trail, all the opposition to that and it has just opened up all kinds of opportunities and this is going to do the same on the other side of the river. And when I was running for counsel at one time, I had a number of people say, why doesn't it go down both sides of the river? And they, people, and as Kim has indicated, this is what people have wanted. So. So are we ready to vote? Do we have more comments?
Do you have the map of the trail, different segments on, on your presentation?
Which map? The, the master plan?
All of them in, in blue. I think it shows the proposed one that we're discussing.
This one? Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. I just want to clarify something I said earlier. Whenever I was talking about the plan that was updated, I kind of call the original one because it was updated when we did the 2050. Everything that was there, that is there except the blue was in the 2018 version that we adopted. And then in 2019, we adopted the blue segment. And so that's what I was, whenever I was referring to, was probably just look at what was originally there before the amendments came into play. Not saying that we should ignore those altogether, but that was, because that plan was updated at that time, it was definitely some important to the community, how it was adopted originally. And so that's why my suggestion was to do that. And when you look at the number two list that was listed earlier, this second one was to look going west and the south side. And so I think we, we know what the, the community wants. I'm not saying we ignore it altogether, but I do also think that we have a fiduciary duty just to make sure that the funds are spent at the proper place, at the proper time. And that's why my recommendation would be to go the other way.
All right, are we ready for a vote?
I'll move to deny the agreement as presented. Is that a viable motion if I were to do that? Like, if I don't want it approved, is that okay if I phrase it, phrase it in that way?
You can do it that, but it'd probably be more relevant if you don't refer to the agreement. Because we, we haven't, that's what we're asking you to do is, is for us to go to EIC with an agreement. We haven't drafted the agreement. So you would just vote, your motion could be, you know, vote to deny, right, right.
Okay, thank you. Because I didn't know too, if we did have an agreement, whether it goes back to EIC and they reconsider it.
I'm going to clarify, EIC absolutely has a signed agreement by EIC. This has been, it was approved by counsel to conceptually go to EIC for the ask. EIC reviewed the item, considered the item, charged staff with a drafting and funding agreement. We held a public hearing.
Right.
It was approved. It was signed. It is before you tonight for approval.
It may be the next one that we're referring to about the funding application.
The next, the next one is, yeah, it's conversation on a different item.
Motion would be correct. Vote to deny the agreement.
Okay, so then that would be a motion to deny the agreement as presented.
Is there a second?
And you know my intent by it, so.
All right, there is no second.
I'll move that we approve a project funding agreement between the City of Curville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation and the City of Curville, Texas for the development and construction of an extension to the city's river trail from Tranquility Island Bridge to scenic downtown overlook pavilion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, we have one. It passes three to one.
Oh, he didn't hear us.
He was waiting by the door.
You can listen, you just can't talk.
That's good. All right. Thank you all. All right, let's move to 8D.
Funding agreement to the City of Curville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation for the creation of a concept feasibility study for extensions of the Curville River Trail around Nimitz Lake in the amount of $182,800. And we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
All right, Ashley?
Yeah, great. If you can get the presentation pulled up on the screen. Perfect. Again, Curville 2050 support, specific action item highlighted in green there to seek EIC funding to extend the River Trail further west, the Thompson Drive Bridge. And then lots of supporting action items for Curville 2050 as we've stated numerous times. So this is the second priority in the Parks Recreation Master Plan and it's on page 40 as Councilwoman Garcia and I noted. If you would like to take a look at that excerpt. Second prioritized priority of the River Trail Master Plan. Again, this is the master plan map that you just saw in the previous presentation. So the concept of the River Trail has been discussed for over 50 years in our community. This slide shows a progress over the last 20 years and as Mayor Eichner already mentioned tonight, we are celebrating the 10th anniversary of the first segment of the River Trail from the Riverside Nature Center to Tranquility Island. So we're very excited about that celebration. This is a trail concept that was completed during a design phase in the 2011, 2012 era. And this is a concept of trail, potential trail segments going west. This was not an adopted master plan. This was just a design concept that we had. So, which brings us here to this item tonight. The EIC has expressed interest in further extensions of the River, River Trail going west. A concept study would be required to determine feasibility and estimated construction costs. And this would consist of approximately 12,800 linear feet of trail located generally along the northeast side of the river. This trail would extend from the Palacio still Guadalupe condominiums near the Dietrich Center extending northwest to the Spur 98 Bridge, then back along the southeast side of the Guadalupe River to the Francisco Lemus Bridge area. The cost for this concept study is $182,800 and this would be a potential EIC Quality of Life Project funding agreement for this study. We did have discussions with the EIC yesterday and they were in favor of this concept going forward. And if we receive your authorization tonight, we will present a funding agreement, hold a public hearing with the EIC and then bring this back to you potentially in January for final approval. The concept study scope would identify ownership along the trail and the easements required. It'd evaluate the feasibility of the construction, hold public input meetings, determine anticipated design and additionally prepare the concept study with estimated project construction costs. And I will turn it back over to you for any questions you may have.
Counsel, questions?
Let's do it.
We have a one citizen speaker, you said?
Yes.
Yes.
George Broody.
George Broody, 1616 Glen Road. So you passed the one before. I would recommend not even bothering with this right now. Feasibility study for this is going to produce a result that's going to tell you some millions of dollars to complete it and you'll be wishing to go do it. The name of EIC is Economic Improvement Corporation, not River Trail Expansion Corporation. You ought to at least periodically address that with using the EIC money to invest in something that's going to give us a return. This is an amenity. It does not, there's no documentation. There won't be any documentation of very, of any economic development other than we run a triathlon, we run a couple of little events down there. But as far as true economic development, jobs and whatnot, it's not hitting it. We know in our, our city that we have a problem with housing and we have a problem with job pay. It's not really either one individually. It's the relationship between the two. Economic Improvement Corporation, other than Killdeer and a couple of little things after it, really doesn't address either one of this and neither does the River Trail. So again, if you had to save the money on the expensive one, this would have been more feasible to do. You're going to end up voting to go forward with it. It's going to either sit on a shelf for a while or you're going to feel obligated to build it. Otherwise, it will sit on the shelf. That seems like a short sighted vision to what economic improvement is supposed to be about. I would encourage you to push EIC to develop their contacts, which is what KEDC is for, and look forward to doing that and bypass this for right now as you're moving forward with this more expensive backdoor to the downtown. Thank you.
So, oh, is it okay, bye?
Yes.
Okay. So as a, as a member of EIC and, and I would, and I think we all know this, but just as a reminder, EIC has very specific funding requirements. Economic development, infrastructure that can lead to economic development and quality of life. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's the extent of what those funds for 4B sales tax can be used for. Is that, am I off? Okay. So it is absolutely an appropriate use under those terms to consider all three of those things. And if you watch back EIC meeting last night, there has been some, if you watch a month ago meeting, there has been a long list of developed potential projects that EIC could fund. The list was from the master plan. It was from council priorities. And those are all quality of life and then some infrastructure projects that could lead to development. EIC is kind of a moving target because we are asked to look at economic development opportunities when they're presented to us. And then we're asked to fund quality of life projects as well and it's a balance. It is. But it's absolutely within the purview of those funds to do quality of life projects and there's nothing wrong with considering those projects. And in doing the scope of this project, we asked John Hewitt about the shelf life of this project. We know that it will be a long-term project the next four or five years. We don't anticipate doing it in the next year or two, obviously. And he feels that his work is, as to cost, there will need to be cost updates, but 75% or more of what he will produce for us has at least a 10-year shelf life. So we're well within the 10-year, so really literally having the ability to consider this. So I, I don't think it's going to expire before we have the opportunity to really fund this and move forward. And again, we looked at first priority and this is second priority. So it's just step one, step two as far as that, that master plan. So. My feelings.
Anyone else? Comments?
I just want to know why we feel like after the first one, we're almost rushing in to go to the second one already and get everything ready for that. We're already getting the project on the go.
I personally don't look at it as rushing in. I think we're just getting answers to questions and what the probability of it is and, and what the, what the challenges will possibly be. So. I, I don't feel we're rushing.
Don't forget the results of the feasibility study they made not, who knows how long they're going to be applicable.
Well, John is, they will be there for a while.
That's what I just said, yeah.
I, I know that's, 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 you know, an opinion on whether that's true or not, we don't know.
Anyone else?
All right, are we ready for a vote?
Someone make the motion, please.
We approve the funding application to the City of Curville, Texas Economic Improvement Corporation for the creation of a concept feasibility study for extensions of the Curville River Trail around Nimitz Lake in the amount of $182,800.
A second?
Second.
All right, Kim seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand. And we have a five zero. Thank you very much. All right, from River Trail, we will go to, back to short-term rentals.
Resolution number 88 dash 2022. A resolution amending the City of Curville fee schedule by adopting fees to be charged for each initial application and renewal application for short, short-term rental units. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Again, I already talked a little bit about it earlier, but the fees, the recommended fees that were approved in the short-term committee were for $100 for the initial registration fee and $50 for the renewal fee.
All right, staff, or staff? I keep calling you staff. I'm sorry.
We're your staff.
Counsel, any questions, any comments? What we have before us? Do we, are we ready for a motion? Do we, are we ready for a motion? And if so, do we have one?
I'll move to approve resolution number eighty-eight dash twenty-twenty-two.
Second?
All in favor? I'm sorry, go ahead.
One question, do you have an analysis that you can provide? You said you did?
Yes, same way. Yeah, I will provide that for you.
Okay, thanks.
And that, and that analysis will bear the numbers?
Yes. And if you recall from the committee meeting, the numbers were actually lower. And then the committee agreed to move it up to a hundred dollars and lowered the renewal from seventy-seven dollars to fifty dollars.
And again, this is something that a year from now, when all of this is looked at, it will be reviewed.
Yeah, you actually have the capability within your budget review process this summer to review as well. When we normally set the fee schedule, this is a mid-year, obviously, based off of new policy, so.
We can adjust fees at any time.
Really at any time, but we do it on a regular basis during the budget process this summer.
Right, but if we found something to be egregious that we can.
We could have a workshop for us.
Yeah.
We could.
That's part of a workshop, Councilmember here.
All right, Counsel, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed and we have none, it passes five zero. Thank you, Garmo. All right. It's going to be a lonely year, not talking about short-term rentals for a while. All right.
Year-end financial report and fiscal year twenty-twenty-three financial report ending ten thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
Julie.
I'm always lonely by the end. Okay, so just to give you kind of a quick look, I think that some points were made earlier about monumental events. And I think we've seen a lot of that tonight. Just looking back, as I was thinking about twenty-twenty-two and what that looked like and everything, we've, we'll say survived in the past year. Still dealing with COVID a little bit, especially during the first part of the year, winter storm, obviously not as bad as twenty-twenty-one, but still had an impact on us, extreme inflationary factors. And I'll say that our budget weathered very well through all of those things, thanks to some adjustments that were made kind of in motion throughout the year with what needed to be done. Special attention we're giving to personnel matters, as you know, specifically with public safety, cost of living and market adjustments that were done, drought conditions. But we did have better than budget sales tax, better than budget EMS revenues, as we've talked about. Water and sewer came out, right at or better than budget, and interest revenue that has shown some significant gains in the last few months. We've also awarded multiple grants. Just kind of looks big when you put them in a list like this, when we started listing them out for what, you know, our departments are really doing to go out and seek outside funding to support their, the resources that they need. So also been awarded the Hazard Mitigation Grant for FEMA that we've talked about, for generation power that we expect here in the next few years. We're working through that process now. So a lot of good things that are happening. So just kind of wanted to brief that before we talked about twenty-twenty-two year end. So I put all the general fund kind of together so you could see it as you see it in your budget book, this is a little easier to follow. Remember, these are unaudited numbers, so these are my estimates. I feel like they're pretty solid numbers as far as you're in change of net position and those kind of things. Sales tax, one point one million better than original budget. Remember, we were pretty conservative going into twenty-two, still in the midst of COVID and everything we were dealing with. We've made some adjustments to that along the way. But that sales tax provided us the ability to fund those cost of living adjustments and the market adjustments that we've had been able to do. EMS revenues, better than budget, and we've talked about the reasons why in the last few meetings. But that increase did allow us to offset the extra expenses that we've had due to public safety, staff shortages, additional training, those kind of things. Interest, obviously, much better than budget, just primarily due to what the Fed has done over the past year. And then, of course, the FEMA funding that we were able to get back from prior year.
Julie, do you have a slide for this?
Oh, yes.
There we go.
I do. I was just showing your numbers, but yes. So streets paving, maintenance was better than budget, but we still have some paving projects in, in process, so you'll see those as we enter into the October wrap-up here.
Will you remind me about that? When we do that, how does that, how does that reflect in our, when we have timing issues?
Right, so typically what we do is take whatever we didn't spend on streets maintenance for one year, and then we bring it to you as a mid-year adjustment, and we move it over to capital projects so that it is saved still for street maintenance. That way, it doesn't roll into fund balance as other things would. So we'll bring that back whenever, probably February, March timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
And look at a mid-year adjustment for twenty-three.
So for instance, we utilize part of that savings from street maintenance dollars from last year to help fund the Westminster reconstruction project.
Yes.
So still within streets.
Right. We keep it grouped together so that it doesn't just get absorbed, so that it's dedicated.
And they all remember all these things.
So supply shortages obviously have been an issue, as we just talked about, mid-year budget amendment that we'll be bringing to you, we'll address those. So we'll talk about streets and then we'll talk about some things that were budgeted in twenty-two that are going to actually be funded in twenty-three just because of some timing issues, and we'll address those in that mid-year as well. Overall, change in net position is positive for the general fund, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Keep in mind, a lot of that is going to roll over into streets. We'll bring you some exact numbers as we get closer and start wrapping all that up. We are working on a five-year forecast, so you'll see that as we're finishing up the budget book. Trina and I have done a lot of work on that in the last few weeks. And we've really keeping a close eye on fund balance and what that looks like year over year, so that we're making sure while we might have a pretty good fund balance right now, what does that look like as expenses continue to grow? How does that look like with revenues? You know, are they going to level? What's going to happen? And so we're doing some pretty conservative estimates on revenues and some kind of mid-level estimates on expenses to kind of make sure we're protecting our fund balance. So more to come on that. So this is just a graphical view of the general fund, year-end estimates on revenues. Mostly just wanted you to kind of see, like I talk about every month, you know, our goal is to budget based on percentages. And when we look at that at the end of the year and they kind of line up with what we budgeted, that makes us feel like we're budgeting, you know, correctly. It is always a budget. There are some things that you just estimate the best you can based on data, but when you look at this, you know, you can really see the impact of sales tax here compared to what it was budgeted. One, one and a half percent doesn't seem like a lot, but that's, that's substantial when you're talking about general fund revenue. So it's important that we monitor that and look at specific payers on an ongoing basis to make sure that we're, you know, protecting that. It's volatile, you know, given the economy right now, it can change anytime, so we're just looking at several factors to make sure we're keeping on top of that. This is the same view, just of expenses, so you can see kind of what we budgeted per category and how those lined up. Somehow coincidentally, personnel is exactly what we budgeted, seventy-point-five percent, even with all the changes we've made. But remember, we shifted in other categories throughout the year to compensate for inflationary issues and things like that. Looking at the water fund, I do have a page for this too, so. So water fund overall, five hundred and twenty thousand positive net position, but I do want to point out the carbon filters that were, the carbon that we talked about at the water plant, we didn't receive that until twenty-three. So that's a hundred and eighty-six thousand that's going to come out of that right off the top. And then whatever adjustments we need to make to twenty-three as we're still working through things that we didn't receive in twenty-two, it's not quite as big impact as it is in the general fund.
What do we do with those, with those monies once, once you have everything accounted for, with the better than budget?
Well, we'll come to you and say, okay, all of these things were budgeted in twenty-two but didn't get expensed until twenty-three. And so we'll ask to amend the twenty-three budget, so some of that fund balance will then go over there.
We'll leave the rest in fund balance.
It'll go into fund balance.
Okay.
Unless you direct us otherwise, or if, you know, we have other recommendations that we bring to you with that mid-year.
There only that one change of one eighty-six?
There's probably some others, but you know.
The total five twenty?
Total five twenty, the one eighty-six specifically, that's our big one. And we haven't really picked apart a lot of the little ones yet, still working through some of that. So there may be some littler ones in there. Nothing with that kind of impact.
So those funds are traditionally either moved to the Water Capital Project Fund or the Water Capital Assets Fund. And so based off of where.
Well, you anticipate.
And we look for policy direction from you all as part of that budget amendment that we do mid-year every year.
Where we put it.
That's right.
Right. And I will say that we have a, a pretty good team assembled that we're working on some really detailed asset and maintenance, like some big ticket stuff that we continue to talk about, how do we fund these kind of things? So we're doing a lot deeper dive into those, as you've seen on the vehicle side that Garmo's been doing over the past few years. We've added building assets, maintenance, things in the ground, those kind of things, and really trying to separate what's operational, what is really assets, and kind of trying to back in to the budget to look at some more long-range forecasting. So we're hoping spring we'll be able to bring you some more detail on that and give you some better ideas of what that really looks like from operational versus asset kind of situation, so. Talked about that. Obviously, transfers out were increased due to that mid-year adjustment, but revenues were able to cover COLA and market adjustments within the water fund, so the water fund covered its own expenses, which was, was really good. This is just the same kind of graphical view of water fund revenues, and you can see they line up pretty close. Not a whole lot to report on the water fund revenues. Obviously, your big guys are going to be water and sewer, and they're usually pretty much equal categorically year over year. On the expense side, you can see kind of same, same kind of method we used here. Everything really lined up nicely. You know, obviously, you know, your capital is going to be smaller here because most of that's going to be in your project fund, so you don't have those big, big-ticket expenses. And I think the idea is, is work through this budget, most of our capital will be outside of our operating fund so that you don't have these big variances in what we're buying that are capital items. So this is your other funds. I kind of grouped this together. These funds are special revenue funds. The ones that are highlighted are the ones that we talk about monthly that have more activity. The other ones you don't see as much because sometimes there's zero activity, sometimes there's a lot of activity, it just depends on what kind of revenues in those funds. What I'll point out here is remember that golf is going to be coming into the general fund as of October first. I will also point out that they have a positive fund balance that they're bringing with them. That's the first time since I've been at the city that they have a positive fund balance, so that's really good news.
They go golf.
So we're working through that process of getting that merger completed. Also, I would mention that both the hot fund and the Library Memorial Fund have committed dollars to HHC. So when you look at those fund balances, keep in mind those, those monies haven't been transferred out of there yet. The grant fund, that's where we hold any grant money that comes into the city. Oftentimes, if it's a large project, we'll take the grant money from the grant fund and move it over to our capital projects fund, so it can be managed because sometimes those are year-over-year projects. If it's kind of a one-and-done thing, then we'll go ahead and expense it in the grant fund. And y'all always know about those because we bring those to you for approval. Right now, that's where our ARPA dollars are sitting, so we just, they're just holding there for right now, except for the ones that we've transferred out that have already been approved by you. With that, I'll take any questions on year twenty-two?
Can you go back one, one slide? I was trying to figure something out.
Yep.
Okay, that, that's all I needed. Good, thank you.
All right, sounds like we're ending the.
We're ending one year.
Twenty-two on a good, good note. And we're, we're in a good, in good shape for our fiscal year twenty-three.
We are, considering, considering the year. It's been, it's been good. I think we've had good staff, had good staff interaction on that, and everybody's just taking care of business. Quick, really, look at just the general fund and water fund for October. I don't have November numbers for you yet, it's too early in the month for us. These are two biggest funds, so just wanted to give you kind of some highlights on that. Remember, October is the first month of the year, so it's really not a good time to be talking about trends. Sales tax is really strong, October was twenty-one percent. November was down two percent, but we had two large payers that paid in October instead of November, so you kind of have to do an average there.
Are you doing actual months there or are you doing?
Well, so months received, so on a cash basis. So if we received in October, then that's actually for August, and so we're, with that two-month lag. We did just receive December's and without any unusual payment activity, we're thirteen percent. So on a rolling twelve-month average, we're ten point seven percent. So still looking really strong in the sales tax area. Again, just, we continue to monitor it to see what's inflationary, you know, what's increased turns.
And I ask this every single time, but what did we budget over last year?
We budgeted six percent over what we estimated the year to end, because remember, we were still, we didn't have all that money yet.
Six percent over estimated actuals.
Right, over what we thought it would end at at the time.
Correct.
Yeah. And to be honest with you, I didn't go back and compare that, but I can, to see what we thought it was going to end at. It ended a little better.
What we thought we were actually going to receive.
Correct.
We went up six percent.
Correct.
And now we're sitting at ten, so that's good.
Right. So still, still rolling, we look at the twelve-month just because you do have those kind of strange out-of-period payments sometimes that can really skew your average, so that's why we try to look at it over a period of time. So you'll see that revenues in general were higher in twenty-one October than they are in twenty-two. That's primarily, if you remember, us talking about how heavy October property taxes were last year, they came in really quick. Not coming in quite so quick this year, that doesn't mean anything, it's just what's happening at the time. Also, we had some early payments from some intergovernmental revenue that are affecting that, so I'm really not concerned about that at all. You can see the impacts of changes in personnel that we made there, so we're already spending more in personnel, which we expected. But also remember, in personnel, it's not just salaries, but it is group insurance, which we had a five percent increase on, and a lot of other things that go into that category.
A lot of these are going to correct over time.
Some of them will, but I don't really look at the better or worse than last year, that's just for comparison, because we knew that salaries and our personnel in general was going to be higher because of the extra group insurance that we had, the market adjustments that we did, and some things like that. So we expect it to be higher. What I really look at is the estimated year-to-date budget. So what we do is take historical three years and say, at this point in time, we had spent this percent. And so we apply that percentage to decide how close are we to what we usually do. And you can see we're within eighty-five hundred dollars of the average. So to me, that's, that's what I really look at, is where are we to where we estimated we should be. If there's any really big variances there, then we kind of dig in a little bit deeper to see if there's any outliers. The one I really dug into was the services. I mean, you can clearly see that's a pretty big variance there, but what that is, is the increase in liability insurance, as we talked about.
It's the what?
The increase in liability insurance. And that's going to be on the general fund and the water fund. So that was a pretty big increase this year over years past. So we expected some of it, it was a little higher than we actually anticipated, but we're watching that and we'll adjust for it, so. Thank, quick look at the water fund. Really on track from a revenue standpoint, if you look at the better, worse-than-estimated budget column, that's really, again, what I look at to kind of determine if we're on track or not. New rates won't go into effect until November first, so they went into effect November first, so you really won't see the impact of that until a little bit on the next report, but really until December and January, we won't really know how that's impacting. We did do the transfer out to asset replacement that was larger than it was last year, so that's why you see the variance there.
And public service announcement about, about sewer rate averaging?
So that really, that helped a lot last year, I think, that we did so much notification for that. We seem to have fewer requests for adjustments and fewer questions about that in our office, so.
And it's a three-month or a two-month?
Three-month average, so your December, January, and February consumption.
So we base our sewer average on your January, February, March water consumption?
December, January, and February. So it's your January, February, and March bills. Remember, we're a month behind.
And what you are actually using in water is going to become your whole year.
That's right.
For your sewer.
That's right. And Mary has been pushing those notices out on her bill messages when she's sending those out.
Not bill your swimming pool in December, January, February.
That's right. And if you do, please call us so that we can identify that and know that and make those adjustments, which we do get those calls from time to time. If someone has a big leak or something like that, they'll call us. Okay, so just giving you some upcoming things, we're still in the middle of audit, still wrapping up the twenty-twenty-two budget year and have started on twenty-twenty-three budget. So busy time for us. Our budget award application is in process, as is our final version of the budget book that'll be coming soon. February, we'll be bringing you our financial report for year-end from our auditors. We'll be starting to estimate revenues for twenty-twenty-four. Kim will start personnel estimates for twenty-twenty-four, and then departments will Kim will start personnel estimates for 2024, and then departments will start on their budgets. We'll start over. Happy to take any questions.
Good job.
None?
Thank you.
Great job.
All right, counsel. We are down to board appointments. And the very first one we have is for Food Service.
Yes, and Councilmember Garcia and I were the liaisons for this board, and neither one of us were able to get ahold of Ms. Dipmar, but I know her to be a true professional. I've known her for years, and so I would like, at this time, to go ahead and move forward on her nomination and appoint her as a board member to the Food Service Advisory Board.
And I'll second that. I'm counting on her word, since I wasn't able to interview her, but yeah.
And I believe that rounds out that board, then?
It does.
It does, so. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand, and it is approved. So we will add Rebecca Dipmar to the advisory board. Okay, thank you. All right. The second one we have is the Library Advisory Board.
We do have two citizen speakers signed up for this.
Okay. All right. Well, let's go ahead with the speakers, then.
Jacqueline Hall.
Good evening, I guess good night at this point, but I've obviously been here before about the same topic, so I'll be brief. We're grateful for this opportunity to have conservatives appointed to the Library Advisory Board, and I hope that council will at least consider having truly diverse opinions represented on the board. And I know that the Library Advisory Board has been tasked by council with reviewing the library's book collection policies. I hope and pray that these policies will change to prevent obscene material from being placed in the children's section ever again. We, the people, will continue to be vigilant to protect the innocence of children. Please don't violate anyone's First Amendment right, free speech again, as happened earlier with Mr. Aguilar. All Americans have First Amendment rights, so I just wanted to add that at the end. But I appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lilian Beard.
Hi, Mayor. I told you I'd see you at the meeting. She followed me around Veterans Day, all over town. I am a veteran. When I joined the military, I raised my hand to defend this country and for the things that this country stood for. And this was back in the '70s. We stood for God in our schools, in our meetings, in everything that dictates our lives. And Ms. Hughes, when you stood up there last time and threw your little fit with the books.
Mayor, I'd like to raise a point of order. This topic is about a board appointment. It's not about... So I just would like to raise that as a point of order, that we're talking about appointing people. We're not talking about the topic of library or past council discussions.
I will back that up. So if, if we can stick to board appointments, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
A group of us was told that there was three places on the board, two for city, one for county. I filled out an application, brought it in here, and told them that I was putting in for the county position on the library board to try to be appointed. They sent me over to the commissioner's court area and where I was told that the county position was always a county commissioner. And the lady there told me that she had called over here to see if there was any more information she could get to clarify that, and she never was able to get back to me because she never heard back from the people over in this building. So I'm just trying to get a little clarification on if there's a second county person that can be appointed, or I'm just trying to get that clarification.
There's just one, and that appointment comes from the county commissioners.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else, Shelley?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Okay. This end of the dais was?
Yes.
You guys were the interview team?
Councilmember Herring and I were the liaisons for this board. We received several applications, and we thank the citizens for those. And at this time, I am moving to appoint Barbara Jansen and Lena Tatch to the Library Advisory Board.
Second.
Okay. We have two names, Barbara Jansen and Lana Tatch. Roman?
I was wondering if the interview team and if council was also considering the application for reappointment that was received for Beverly Avery.
I, we did not receive her, her application in time. I didn't see that one until tonight.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to amend the motion to instead reappoint Beverly Avery and appoint Crystal Smith.
Is there a second to that motion? Hearing none, we will go back to the original motion of Barbara Jansen and Lana Tatch. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, we have three, four, four, and against, we have one. So we have two new appointees for the library board. All right. Thank you very much. The next one is Parks and Rec, and I believe we are making one, one appointment to this. And this was Kim and Joe.
So we are very, very fortunate in this board to have 10 applicants for one position, so.
They always have the most fun.
So I personally would like for all of the applicants to continue to not be discouraged if they're not an appointee tonight, because the person that I will move to appoint was on our list last time, and we did not appoint that person. And I would like to, with that being said, encourage everyone to stay involved, because this is what we want to happen. But my motion is going to be to approve Russell Nimke for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions? All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. The next one we have is Recovery Coalition, and our team was Roman and Joe.
Yes, Mayor. We received five applications for three positions. There was some confusion about the application expiration on the two. We would like to just do our due diligence and ensure that the applicants who submitted their applications are still, in fact, interested. I wasn't able to get ahold of one of them, and so with that, we come with a recommendation to give us more time, make sure that those two applicants are still willing and able to serve, and if any submit a new one, then we'll do that. But for now, I would move to table this until the next regular meeting and allow the ones that are currently in office that would expire to continue serving as they're allowed to.
Do we have a second to that?
Yes, second. We discussed, Roman, Mr. Garcia and I discussed this several times, and in the, in the hope to be completely transparent, we want to make sure that those who filed an application a year ago, a year ago in October, still want to serve, because this, this council, this coalition is too important and requires someone who's dedicated and wants to be there, and we want to make sure those people still do. So I second this motion to table until the next meeting.
Okay. All in favor of tabling appointments to the Recovery Coalition? And it is unanimous. Very good. And the last one, planning and zoning. Do we need to go into executive session on this one?
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
I don't know who the team was, but I don't.
No, council. All right. If you guys are good, then do you have a motion for us?
I do. Councilmember Clarkson and I were the liaisons for this board, and three of the applications are reappointments. So at this time, I would move to reappoint David Lipskin, Taber McMillan, and Michael Seigerman. And then I would also make the motion to appoint Kimberly Richards to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
We have a second. Any comments, any questions?
I have a comment for Kimberly. This is a rough board. Okay.
All right. So we have a motion for three, three appointments and one new appointment. All in favor, raise your right hand, and it is unanimous.
Don't blame us.
And thank you.
Yes. All right. This brings us to the end, and is there anything for future agendas?
I would like to see if we could just discuss the application process and application deadlines. There's been some confusion throughout, and I think it'd just be beneficial if council could just go over that briefly to just ensure that the times that we submit press releases for applications and then the deadlines, that we could work all that out and make sure we're all on the same page for that call of the board.
I think, I would second that. And I think that's probably a good idea.
I would just, I would just, I'm not against that. I would just not want, I would not want this to become a burden on staff, because I feel like we ask them to do a lot of things, but I do understand what you're saying.
Well, and I think this is something that we need to decide as to.
Right.
The timeframe, so.
I don't want to make anything hard for them.
I have a surprise for council.
Uh-oh.
Oh, my God.
Yes.
I don't like surprises in this room.
I know you don't like surprises, and I don't either, but this is a surprise. What I would like to do is, beginning in January, I'm going to play up Sets of Fruit Basket with Where You're Sitting.
I don't want to sit there.
Yeah.
So what I'd like to do, and you will ask me why, and I'll simply say, sometimes there's a new perspective from where you sit, and I found that going from there to here. So we're just gonna, we're going to have new perspectives. So Roman, I'm going to put you where Joe is. Joe, I'm going to put you where Kim is. Kim is going to go where Brenda is, and Brenda's going to go where Joe is. Wait.
Wait, I would.
No, no, no.
Oh, oh, no, you're going to.
You're going to be Kim's seat?
You're going.
I'm going where Kim is.
Kim's looking over.
So basically, the two of us.
Oh, I'm over here.
We're just swapping.
Yes. Yeah. But Kim's going to the outside.
Right. And I'm in the inside.
And you're coming to the inside, okay?
You're going to have to remind me.
Talking about making it hard for staff. Ms. McLehand, you got that?